I still want to say something. Because he asked me and I said, "Hi." He probably figured out. Because I told him, I said, "I still have two more years of training."
Yeah, that's different.
Then I went down and tried.
There were a couple people that suddenly they left.
So.
More finals in this. It's good. Yeah. It was for the songers that DS5 is tonight. It's where I'm.
Mrs. Peak, oops. Mrs. Peak, could you please bring us back from closed session? Mrs. Peak, could you please, oh, sorry. Thank you.
Are you ready for the closed session report? Okay. The council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed a potential litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub four, three potential actions. The city council discussed the matter and provided, were provided with a status update and no further action, no reportable action was taken. On item number two, potential litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub two and sub D sub four, the city council provided direction on the scope of a delinquency action to be addressed with respect to APN 219 231 1600 and APN 219 114 2800. That concludes the closed session report.
Okay, with that, the special meeting is adjourned and I will call the meeting to order, the regular city council meeting for January 23rd, 2024. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Musgrove? Would you like to lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will give us the invocation this evening.
Madam Mayor, we have an invoker.
Oh, we do? Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't see it, so, all right, we have an invocation.
Good evening, my name is Hector Morales, I'm one of the pastors at North Coast Church at our San Marcos campus. Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and honorable council members, and those in attendance this evening, thank you for allowing me to pray for our meeting this evening. Will you bow your heads and join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, first of all, thanking you for our city leaders. Thank you for their willingness to serve our community through their leadership. I pray that you will give them wisdom and discernment as they discuss the various issues before them tonight. Also want to thank you for the city staff who diligently work every day for the public good. Father, would you bless our city staff and our council members for the work that they do? And it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Scallik, could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sannella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. All right, next up, we have the Mission Hills High School Women's Volleyball. If you could join me in the front. This is one of the few fun parts of our job, so we're really excited to have you ladies here today. We also have coaches present and team managers. You guys are really organized. So I'm going to start out with reading one from one of the coaches. So we have Susan Stricker. Okay, "The San Marcos City Council does hereby present Susan Stricker with an Honorable Certificate of Recognition for an impressive season with the Mission High School, Mission Hills High School volleyball team. The coaches and the team have brought considerable recognition to themselves, their school, and of course, the community for their dedication, camaraderie, and sportsmanship." That's me. "The City Council of the City of San Marcos, California proudly congratulates the Grizzlies on their successful season." Did you want to share a little bit today?
I would just like to say thank you to the program that we have at our school and the opportunities that they give us. These girls worked really hard this season. Our coaching staff worked really hard this season, our team managers, it took all of us, it took an army, but we did it and we made it really far and I'm really, really proud of you guys. This is the first time for our program that we've made it to the CIF championship. Congratulations.
Okay, now the rest of the coaches. Haley Oviette.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Morgan Wilson. Okay, then we have, oh, one more, Levi Torado? Oh, he's not here. Oh, okay. And then we have the team managers. Izzy Proso? Nope, not here. Okay. Anna Hagen?
Thank you so much.
And then, let's get to the players. Okay, Brooklyn Carter.
Congratulations.
Michaela Negret. Alana Moore. Lauren Villonas. Ever Lanier. Taylor Saibesma? Is that right? Leah Tyra Crouch. Quinlan Grooman. Riley Noonan. Lucy Garrity. And by the way, this is a little week on the clapping, so when I'm all done, we're going to have to really bring it for the girls, okay? Teoria Tenosamoa? All right. You don't understand how much pressure it is until you're actually up here doing this. Leandra Alagato. And Ashley Borg. All right, that's our cue for the real clap, everyone. Nothing else about the season? Something fun, a fun story? Come on. No? All right, well, we'll just go straight to the pictures, but you have your open mic moment. Saying, okay. Wait, who's the team captain? Oh! See? See, now you're being ball and told. That's how we work around here. Well, does anyone want to say just something fun about the season? Come on, ladies. Let's do it! Yeah, a senior, I think so, definitely. All right.
Do I say it in the mic?
Yeah.
Um, I just want to say, like, thank you to our team and our parents and all the coaching staff, like, we all worked really hard this season and, like they all said, this is the first time in program and school history for us to, our girls volleyball team to win CIF, so, thank you, guys.
Jessica Carter. Um, yeah, pretty much the same. I'm so grateful for every single one of these girls, I consider them family. Thank you to the coaches for giving me my spirit back after such like a hard year not being able to play, like, I'm just so grateful for this team.
And the parents, thank you for, I know, I know what it's like to have a child in sports and it's a lot of work on you too, so thank you for that. And we're going to take a quick picture, so I need you to, we'll scooch over, we'll scooch over this way since we're kind of short, actually. Again, best part of the job, we love doing that. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that anyone wishes to pull? I actually have some speakers on item number six. If no other items will be pulled, we will just approve everything, the balance, up to item one through five, and number six will be pulled. That's my motion. Do I have a second? Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Okay, moving on to item number six. Do we have a presentation at all? Sorry, there's still a lot of movement going around.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I believe that we have representatives from National Corps with us this evening who will do a brief presentation.
As Mr. Seymour makes his way through, I would note that this is consistent with the prior direction that was given by the city council authorizing the loan.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is John Seymour from the nonprofit National Community Renaissance, and we also have, as part of our team tonight, Chris, and please stand up. There, thank you very much. Tonight culminates in National Corps' path to redevelop Villa Serena. We acquired the, both of those buildings on the east and the west side of Marco Street over 20 years ago, and the path was from that time is to ultimately redevelop it, adding new units, take care of the parking, more friendly amenities for the residents in the neighborhood. And so tonight, we're on the second and final phase of Villa Serena. When we acquired it, the buildings were called Lido Imperial, if any of you remember, and they were in extraordinary bad condition. So we bring, fast forward today, next slide, on where we are. The second phase is the final phase, to culminate in a total of 148 units, it was 136 units. This particular building will add over 25% two and three bedrooms. We are very environmentally efficient, more amenities onsite, we're going to take care of the parking problems, and again, adding over 50% of the bedrooms as two and three bedrooms. Next slide, please. You can see Phase Two is on the east side, and that would be the final phase. Phase One is already leased up, it's 85 brand-new units completed. Phase Two will start construction later this year and finish construction by April of 2026. Next slide, please. Here is the arithmetic on the before and after. In general, we're adding a total of 75 new bedrooms, a total of 148 units, the majority two and three bedrooms. The affordability will be extremely low income to low income. We have a total of, in this phase, 63, 63 total units. Next slide, please. Phase One today, next slide. That's Phase Two across the street, that's the subject building that would be demolished and rebuilt. Next slide, please. That is architectural rendering of Villa Serena Phase Two on the east side. Next slide, please. Another architectural rendering. Next slide, please. And this is our project timeline, again, starting in June of this year, ending in April of 2026. Move-out for the residents would be May of 2024. I'd also like to highlight that part of the city's efforts and our effort as the developer and owner is to add in permanent supportive housing units within the total 148. So in the first phase, we set aside eight homes for kids coming out of the foster care system, and this phase will have five, five of those units as well set aside for kids coming out of the foster care system. Would you like to make it? Yes. Go right ahead. And that would, no, go right ahead.
Is that the last of it, or?
Yes, yes. We'll, we have translation services available as well if the mayor and the council would like.
Oh, that would be, that would be great, if you could just maybe do a brief and then, and then be available for any questions once our speakers come up, that would be great.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so este es el proyecto de Villa Serena.
Can I before, can I get a clarification? Are you our interpreter for the evening, or are you with National Corps?
I'm with National Corps.
Okay.
Yes. So este es el, un, el proyecto de Villa Serena que empezó, esta propiedad empezó en 1974. Ya terminamos la primera fase y ahora vamos a la segunda fase. La primera fase fue 85 apartamentos y ya estamos 100% ocupados y ahora vamos a la parte dos. Vamos a poder arreglar mucho los problemas que estamos teniendo ahorita como el parqueadero más apartamentos de una, dos y tres recámaras también. Y ya estamos listos para la segunda fase y queremos terminar este proyecto y poder dar a la comunidad esta oportunidad para poder ayudar a lo que está, lo que se necesita en este momento para esta comunidad. ¿Alguna preguntas?
Okay?
Yep, we're ready for any questions and answers.
Okay, so I, I will get to the speakers and I'm going to talk about what the action is tonight, and then if you could just maybe sit in the front seat, the front row, sorry, not the front seat, the front row, if you don't mind, that would be great. Okay, and maybe just write down any questions that are asked, and then you could address them all at once, if you don't mind, just to save on time. Okay, so this, the action this evening is to, to approve or adopt the resolution approving an amended developer loan agreement by the, by and among the successor housing agency, which is the City of San Marcos, the City of San Marcos and Villa Serena Limited Partnership, and authorize the city manager to execute the same and to take associated actions. So we have several speakers on this item. The first will be Lorena Vázquez, followed by Olivia Ramirez, followed by Luz Villafana. So first up is Lorena Vázquez. And then, if I didn't call your name, I still have a stack here, so Lorena Vázquez. If you could come down to, come down to the podium and address us, that would be great.
Can I, I'm still confused, do we have an interpreter this evening that's interpreting for our Spanish speakers?
I can do that.
Okay, yeah, come up to the, or, yeah, come up to the podium, thank you, thank you for being here this evening.
Okay, buenas noches. Este, me llamo Lorena Vázquez, yo vengo a pedir que si nos, ellos cuando nos dijeron de, que nos podían mover, dijeron que nos iban a ubicar. Y ahorita de los apartamentos que los mandaron en la lista, nadie nos quiere ayudar.
So my name is Lorena Vázquez and I live at Villa Serena, and currently, right now, we've been trying, we were told we were going to be relocated, and we haven't received any help, and we're, we've gone to the apartments that we, the list that they received, and they're not getting any help from the apartment complexes that they're going to.
Okay. We'll have, we'll have someone address that in just a moment. Okay, did you have anything else that you'd like to add? So don't leave, they will, they will address your concerns, okay? Gracias. Okay, next up will be Olivia Ramirez, followed by Luz Villafana, and then Sonita, Sonita Montoya. Sorry. Might need to wear my glasses. So Olivia Ramirez?
Olivia Ramírez. Olivera Ramírez va a pasar.
Hello, buenas noches, este, mi nombre es Toñita Montoya, yo estoy aquí porque cuando yo entré esos apartamentos nunca me dijeron que los iban a tumbar. Cuando yo vine a la reunión aquí la primera vez dijeron que iban a tumbarlos donde está, donde estoy ahorita viviendo, que es el 339. Ahora que ya, después que volví a venir a otra junta, dijeron que iban a ser los del 34. 40. Y que nos iban a relocar cuando ya estuvieron en eso listos a nosotros. Ahora ya no hay ayuda ahorita, ya fui a varios apartamentos que nos dieron la lista y están diciendo que no es cierto, que ellos no tienen ninguna obligación de estarnos dando apartamento. Entonces, ¿cuál es la palabra de los que dijeron que nos iban a relocar? Allí ellos son los que nos están fallando porque no están cumpliendo con su palabra. Y por eso precisamente estoy aquí y toda esta gente que estamos aquí es por lo mismo que estamos buscando, el apoyo de ustedes.
So, déjame tratar entonces para que no se me olvide todo. My name is Antonia Montoya and I live at Villa Serena, and I, when I moved into Villa Serena, I wasn't told that we were gonna, they were gonna be tearing the apartments down. She was under the impression that she was supposed to move to the new phase once the new phase was going to be built, and she hasn't received any help, and she's been going to the units, the apartment complexes that she received on the list from property management and relocation, and they are not assisting her with being able to help her, they're giving her the runaround as far as where, so it's kind of like the same thing that the other person was addressing.
Okay, I do have a question. Are, Mr. Seymour, are you and your team going to be available when the meeting ends to get contact information for?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Could you please let everyone know that, that would be great.
So John Seymour está aquí ahorita y va a recibir toda la información de todos los residentes que están aquí, su información de contacto para que podamos comunicarse, para que él se pueda comunicar con ustedes.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up will be Olivia Ramirez, followed by Luz Villafana, and then?
Olivia Ramírez.
Before our next speaker comes up, I do have a point of clarification at some point. Is the communication happening with John Seymour or with another individual, another company, if we can?
I think he said he had a team this evening. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm Chris Pias, the relocation manager for National Corps. I have been the direct contact with the residents, so just clarification, I do have every resident's contact. And just a little background, quick little background of what's going on, so December 28th, we did initiate a relocation meeting, community meeting with all residents of Villa Serena. Jenny did the translation in Spanish and presented a presentation with handbooks on how the process is going to go, what the next steps were, and what notices they will be receiving, like their 120, 90, 60 days, any other communication. Immediately following that, a communication notice was sent for residents that didn't make it to the meeting on what they had missed, and that they could pick up a relocation packet of handbook of the presentation in the front office immediately. The past two weeks, the week of January 8th and 13th, each resident was given, it's almost like an hour, we committed an hour for each resident to go over their notice of eligibility or ineligibility, go over the process again, how it was going to happen from now until May 1st, answer any questions. All notices were given in English and Spanish. All notices were given in English and copies of in Spanish. And for the most part, all interviews were done in Spanish just because of the community there at Villa Serena. But we did offer an English and Spanish. There was a team of four, including Jenny as well, who did commit it to the interviews. And then between that, other communications have been going on, whether, you know, with the office hours. There have been, I've been available weekends, nights, early mornings for the residents, primarily through text, just because I also do have other meetings, but at least it keeps a log they were able to go back to. And then this week coming up, another communication will go out to the residents. On, we're just gonna start looking at resources, not only in San Marcos, but the whole county of San Bernardino, if they choose to go somewhere else.
San Diego.
I'm San Mar, oh, San Diego.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Sorry, the county of.
I was like, whoa, whoa, we don't want that.
The county of San Diego, those, we understand there is the preference in San Marcos, but those that choose to go outside of San Marcos, they're willing to. So we want to provide them with those resources. And just, I just want to keep a constant communication with the residents because we know this is a stressful situation, but National Corps relocation job is to minimize the hardship for them.
And, and just for clarification, have you then met with everyone at least one time or not quite yet?
Correct. Oh, sorry about that, mayor.
That's okay.
We have completed all relocation interviews with every single resident except for one, just because they're out of the country right now, but that would be completed next, next week on the 31st.
Okay, so you've had initial contact with the folks that have already spoken?
Correct. Sometimes more than once. So the initial contact would be the community meeting and then their one-on-one sit-down for their hour relocation, answering questions, issuing notices, and going over their waivers and just going, going over the presentation that John did of how the process, in case they forgot from the community meeting.
So I guess, in my opinion, whoever's speaking this evening, well, so far the comments have been that they're not quite sure of the process. They don't feel like they have gotten much help to this point. I guess maybe if you just made a list of those folks and then you would be able to follow up with them, being that you already have their contact information, that would make sense to me that you would be able to do it. And I, and I know that you guys really want to be transparent and make sure that people understand the process, and it is a complicated process. So I do, I do note that. But I think if you made a list and felt, you know, then, then folks would feel like they're, they've been heard here this evening and that you've taken their comments into account. I think that would be very helpful. So.
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No, and we'd like to be completely transparent. So not only the residents here, I'm sure there are many more that feel the same, that just weren't able to be here. And so I like to be completely transparent with the residents and provide that communication all across the board.
Perfect. And then if you could just maybe communicate that, that would be great.
So el nombre de él es Chris Paez. Pudo hablar sobre lo que está haciendo con Villa Serena. Se sentó con todos los residentes, faltó una persona, pero todos hemos podido sentarnos con todos, por lo menos por una hora. Y también hicimos la comunicación, la junta que tuvimos con la comunidad, diciembre 28, cuando les dejamos saber a todos de Villa Serena de los 120 días que íbamos a tumbar. Y también lo hicimos con un traductor en español. Y después empezamos todas las citas. Las citas duraron, como le dije, una hora y les dejamos saber sus. No, guardamos el espacio de una hora y si duró una hora no estaba bien, pero si duró menos estaba. Todo dependiendo en todo el proceso que tuvimos a esquero. Pero para todos hicimos el tiempo de una hora, aunque todos no duraron una hora.
Okay, so.
I'm, so, espere tantito, okay, dejé que hable.
Could you ask him if he filled out a speaker slip? I would like to.
Sí, firmo su hoja de, para poder hablar, su speaker list, la hoja blanca.
Okay, if you could just articulate that, we will have him come down and speak and we'll listen to all of his questions and comments.
Okay, so si firmo esta hoja entonces le van a llamar con su nombre y entonces van a venir aquí arriba y dar todos sus, lo que, las preguntas que tengan.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so if you.
So I guess just to clarify on that hour interview process, based on our past experiences, it's usually about an hour, nothing more. If it is more, we could, you know, stay late with them, set a second interview with them to go over any questions. Realistically, I have about five to 10 residents reaching out to me via phone and text each day, and I answer every single one of them or get back to them as soon as I can that day. But depending, each varies. It could be a 15-minute interview or it could be an hour interview. It really just depends on each resident on how many questions they have and if they understand the concept of what's going on.
So para clarificar, hicimos una hora para cada cita, pero a veces las citas duraron menos tiempo, pero sí dedicamos ese tiempo para los residentes.
And I would imagine if they need an hour and a half, you would spend an hour and a half if that's necessary.
Absolutely.
Yes, so maybe just if you don't mind.
Necesitaban ustedes una hora, hora y media para, you know, darle, si tenían más preguntas para, para Chris, él estaba disponible más tiempo. So todo dependiendo, eso, Chris, ya tienen el número de Chris. Él les ha mandado por texto muchas de ustedes y por teléfono y, so está disponible en todas horas del día.
Okay, we have a question up here from the dais.
Thank you, Jenny, for translating on the spot. It seems to me that the first two speakers mentioned that they were, for lack of better way to say it, they were directed to potential housing options and that those options just don't seem to be working out for them, for, it wasn't really clear what reason. Can you shed a little bit of light for us as to what that arrangement was with regards to that alternate housing? Was there more of a commitment to the, to the residents or was it just, here's some suggested places to go? And then are you aware of the challenges that they're, that they're communicating to us tonight?
So yes, thank you, council member. It was a list of resources and it's the resource list that's on the City of San Marcos website. So it's in English and Spanish. It shows affordable properties in the City of San Marcos that they could reach out to, have the directions to go visit. Now for the rest, I think it probably, so I don't speak on behalf, but I think maybe Ms. Daniels would be better person to speak on behalf of those challenges and, and the communication to the developers.
So, so here's what I would like to do, just to, for, to keep us organized. How about we do this? How about we hear from all of the speakers and then we ask all the questions? So if you three could just maybe stay kind of right here and then have you come back up. But if you could be writing down, Mr. Seymour, whatever questions are happening in kind of real time, then we would be able to have you go back and discuss it. And then we can also, is, is, do we have, do we have our person here this evening? We do. Okay, perfect. I couldn't, oh, there she is, okay. I couldn't see her for a minute. So, yeah, so then we would, we would have her come up as well. So we'll have a full team to answer any questions so that everyone feels like they've, they've been heard this evening. So if you could maybe just articulate that, the process.
So vamos a mandar a todas las personas que querían hablar y preguntar sus preguntas primero y vamos a estar aquí contestando a todas sus preguntas, okay? So vamos a hacer esto primero y vamos a estar contestando mientras lo estamos haciendo.
I do have, before we proceed with, I do have a couple of concerns that, that I'm seeing so far. One, I'm concerned that it seems to me we have a number of residents that are, that appear to be monolingual speakers. And I'm concerned that they're not having simultaneous interpretation, so they're not listening. They're not able to hear the concerns that have been expressed and the entire information that's being discussed. So that is very concerning to me. The other concern, I was gonna have a follow-up question about that I'd like to address at some point, is the issue that I've heard so far already that we are providing our residents a list of affordable housing projects and that there's no response, there's no availability. So if somebody can touch on that at some point, because I think that is a big concern.
So I'd like to address the first question. I do actually, because I too am a little concerned about that. So here's what I was thinking, and I was, and I was hoping you could translate this as well, that any questions and, you know, to, to break it down, so it's not just a whole paragraph of things that you have to remember, but maybe just kind of like pause and then, and then, and then, and then we can hear everything that everyone is, is wanting to say. I think that's really important. So I agree with your concern, Councilmember Nunez. And then at the, when Sylvia comes up, then we can have those questions also responded to. And I'm assuming, I see her back there writing something down. So I'm assuming that she will be able to address any questions and be able to give a full response on how the process goes on our end so that everyone feels like they are very clear of what, what our, our job is and then what your job is because we're here to assist everyone in this room and how we're gonna work together as a team on that. So I, I think those would answer your, your concerns, council member.
I do have one additional point since the instruction that I heard from the mayor is that for John to compile at some sort of list. So one of the questions, the Spanish that we've, the speakers that we've heard so far have been Spanish speakers. So I'm just wondering how John is gonna be able to compile a list by, by Spanish speakers. So can we get that clarified?
Well, we're gonna have that translated, aren't we? That you're gonna translate the questions? Yeah, 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 they've got, they've got it covered, yeah.
Estamos tratando de ver cómo vamos a traducirles para que ustedes tengan toda su información
porque es una, quieren ellos que esté todo claramente para todos, si están, you know, hablan otro idioma también en español.
Bite-sized pieces.
Yes, bite-sized pieces.
To give John a chance to write it down.
Yes.
And so that the rest of the audience can hear the breakdown too.
Okay, perfect. Okay, next up will be Olivia Ramirez. Olivia? Okay, I will come back to that if Olivia is no longer here. Maybe she went to the restroom. Luz Villafana? Luz Villafana? Welcome.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you. I'm not a resident of San Marcos, but I am a member of Universidad Popular and a community activist. And I am glad that I came. I'm from the working class. And so I can just imagine the disruption in their lives that is gonna take in here, what things are happening for the better. I'm just here to ask you to be very conscientious of these people that have to work very hard. Their children are gonna be, their lives disrupted for a while. And it's to be very aware that life goes on and they have to deal with moving and moving back and to be very sensitive to their needs. I am part of the working, working class. I am retired, thank God now. And my life now is to advocate for working people and their children, those families. So I am glad that I came to this meeting. I'm not a resident of San Marcos, but like I said before, I'm a community activist concentrated on the lives of working people. So thank you and, you know, just listen to everybody, be sensitive to their feelings, especially the students, the young people. As adults, we have dealt with a lot of hardship, especially when we are immigrants, the majority of them. I don't know who they all are, but, but children are more sensitive to those big changes, just going to school and the times and, you know, their lives are gonna be disrupted. So thank you for listening and I'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, the next one?
Can I translate real quick?
Yes, please. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Se llama Luz de la papa y es la, es una represente, es una activista de la comunidad. No es, no es residente de Villa Serena, pero ella está aquí para ayudar a todos los residentes y dejarles saber a todos que ustedes son gente trabajando con hijos y está aquí para representarlos a ustedes. Está aquí escuchando a todo lo que están diciendo todos los residentes de Villa Serena y sabe que todos son inmigrantes y quiere que tomemos en cuenta todo lo que están diciendo ustedes en esta noche. Y está aquí para ayudarnos.
Thank you. Next up is, I think it's Marcelino Pérez Santiago?
Marcelino.
Oh, give him a little extra time. Take your time. Don't worry. Don't stress.
Okay, perfect. Okay, mucho gusto. Mi nombre es Marcelino Pérez Santiago. Este, quería, quería que ustedes se pusieran en mi, en mi, en mi vida, se puede decir? Porque ahorita estoy más del pie, tengo una, una lesión grave.
Can you jump in? I think that's probably, like, so we hear everything.
So my name is Marcelino Pérez Santiago. I am a resident of Villa Serena. And he wants you to put yourselves in his shoes. He currently was in a bad accident and is.
Una cirugía.
He had surgery.
Y, y como, como todo tiempo en enero, todo tiempo en enero, a partir de enero se guardan los cheques para, para otra vez llenar la información para los apartamentos. Entonces ahora, ahora mi, mi pensador, ahora cómo le puedo hacer? En otros apartamentos me piden cheques y no tengo. Y se sabe, hay gente que se porta muy grosera y que me dice, no, no tengo, no hay lugar. Firmame este papel amarillo y ya este, te hablamos.
Okay, let's get some translation on that.
So he usually saves all his checks in the month of January because he usually recertifies during that time. So he's pretty much ready, but he's stating that he goes over to speak to these other apartment complexes in the City of San Marcos. And they are either being rude and they say they can't help him and they just say, here, fill this paper out. We'll call you when we are, we have something available.
Okay, all right.
Y como nos dijo la persona que está aquí presente, nos dijo que nos iban a reubicar. Yo estaba contento porque nos van a reubicar. Y a último, cuando me dijeron que íbamos a llenar un papel para, perdón, para platicar de un papel que nos estaban enseñando, que, que no calificamos para reubicar, le digo, entonces si se ponen a pensar ellos, mi situación ahorita, yo no puedo estar, este, aplicando ahorita un apartamento porque quieren que represente cheques y no puedo ahorita.
So currently, right now, he doesn't have any checks because he hasn't been working. He was told he was gonna get relocation benefits and he's not getting that. He went to a meeting with relocation and they just said that they weren't gonna be able to find him housing. So he's just worried about his situation.
Okay, and could you let him know that there will be the team afterward to, to sit down with him and, not, not this evening, not to sit down with him, but they will definitely be able to help answer all of his questions and his concerns?
So el equipo se va a sentar con ustedes, con ustedes pues personalmente para, para hablar sobre todas sus preguntas que tiene.
Sí, pero lo que quiero yo saber porque no, ahorita ahora sí como dicen, me están agarrando como, me interesa más mi familia que, que nada. El primero es mi familia.
His family first. He's just worried about where he's gonna go with his family.
Sure, and we can understand that. So Chris, Mr. Pérez Santiago, yeah, Mr. Pérez Santiago, he's definitely going to need to have you speak to him. Let him know that he will be on the list to be contacted.
Lo vamos a poner en la lista para que les llamen en este día, mañana o más pronto mañana.
Thank you. Give him a couple of minutes to get back. Analia Sia, followed by Eduardo Callejas?
Sí, Eduardo Callejas.
Okay, so this is Eduardo Callejas.
Pues es por lo mismo que venimos, pero o sea simplemente queremos la reubicación que dijeron. Yo pienso que todos vivimos diferente, trabajamos diferente, pero pues todos somos iguales, necesitamos que nos reubiquen.
So he's just, my concern is being relocated. He was told he was gonna be relocated somewhere else. And he's just like everyone else, everyone else, a working person and wants to be able to just be relocated to another place to live.
Okay, tell him thank you for the comments and don't leave because we're, we're going to have, we're gonna have a discussion after everyone speaks.
Okay, so no se vaya porque vamos a tener una discusión después de que se terminen las preguntas.
Okay.
So no se vaya a ningún lado, okay?
Gracias. Next up, Analia? 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 Okay, I'll put that to the side for now. César Hernández.
César Hernández.
César? César? One of the two, sorry. Hernández. Oh, and there's Oralo Jamiento? Oh, sorry. I don't know.
es porque tenemos la necesidad, y cuando uno va a buscar otro apartamento que son de bajos recursos, te dan un año a dos años, te esperas, y yo pienso que eso no es posible para nuevamente aplicar para un apartamento de bajos recursos. No, no hay tiempo.
Okay, let's get translation.
So in my place, we have lived there for 10 years, and we are low income, and we have the need for the low-income housing, and he has gone to other apartment complexes, and they haven't been able to help him.
Sí, en esa forma, yo pienso que es muy poco tiempo en lo que están dando, y por lo que veo, que hay mucha gente aquí, le dijeron que va a haber reubicación, y no, no hay.
So he's just thinking that it's too little bit of a timeframe that they're being given to be relocated or find another place to live, and they're not being assisted in the relocation portion of it, like they want to be relocated, and right now they're having to go to apartments and find their own.
Okay, so if you could just tell him that to wait till the end of the meeting, and then we will answer. I'm writing down questions, too, and we will get those addressed, and to not leave.
Okay, que no se vaya, porque vamos a hablar sobre todo.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so Simone Rincon, followed by Irma Raimondo?
Simona Rincon.
And Madam Mayor, I think what we're going to do is, we actually have a translator available that we'd like to translate while the residents are speaking.
Okay, perfect.
Which I think will be helpful and maybe make this a little bit more inclusive.
Yes.
So Fortuno is going to help us with that, and then I think if National Corps gets a question that we need translated, I think National Corps can assist.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Thank you so much.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Simona Rincon. Este, en mi caso, yo soy mamá de tres hijos, soy mamá soltera.
Good afternoon. My name is Simona Rincon, and I am a single mother of three.
Y en mi caso, mi preocupación es de que mis niños están en la escuela, y no los puedo mover ahorita a mediados del año.
In my case, my worry is that my sons and daughters, they have to move schools.
Ellos, este, ahorita no se pueden mover de escuela, sería algo difícil para ellos, y también en mi caso, pues yo he ido a buscar y no encuentro, y este, en mi caso, a mí me dijeron que porque yo firmé un waiver, pero mi hijo también está en el contrato, y él no lo ha firmado.
Right now, it's really difficult to find a new place, and to change the kids for the education is not a priority, so she really wants them to have an education. And she was told that she signed a waiver, which I have right here, that she signed back until 2013 that she would not receive relocation benefits.
En mi situación ahorita no estamos preparados para movernos. Este, mi hijo, el mayor, está estudiando, y ya estamos tratando de salir adelante, pero ahorita no es posible, y este, en mi caso, yo hace un año les di una carta de la doctora de mi segundo hijo, que había moh en los apartamentos, y que me tenían que mover inmediatamente, y no me han movido.
Right now, it's really difficult to find an apartment. She's been trying to different apartments, and they told her that they cannot, and the rent is really expensive, and she told them that my brother, there was both in the apartments, and he got sick, he could have had asthma, and that they had to move him from a new apartment, so he won't get asthma.
Y no, no nos han movido, y este, y pues yo tengo esas preocupaciones, y yo ya se las hice saber a ellos que si me pueden ayudar, también somos, este, también nos protege la visagú, somos víctimas de violencia doméstica, y parece que no hay ninguna ayuda para eso.
She had a doctor's note for that, and she told Jennifer about it, and she's a visagú victim of crime, and yeah.
Y pues esa es mi preocupación, de que ahorita yo no me puedo mover, soy madre soltera con tres hijos.
That's my worry right now, that I cannot move, since I am a single mother of three, and I can't find no apartments.
Y quisiera que me dieran los documentos en inglés, porque en ese entonces no me dieron en español, y yo no sabía que renunciaba a todos los derechos.
Back in 2013, when she received the relocation benefit waiver, she did not know it, since it was in English, so she pretty much did not know what she was signing.
Okay, okay, thank you. And could you let her know that at the end, we will, I've written down quite a few questions, and I know that also Mr. Seymour is doing that as well, to not leave, because we want to make sure we address those questions and give her all the support that she needs.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
I would like to speak as well, so should I wait for my turn, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, so you are one of our speakers this evening?
Yes.
Well, thank you for jumping in. That's fabulous, thank you.
Yeah, that's my mother right there.
I appreciate that. Yes, but let me find your slip, so I can, or maybe just when I call your name, maybe you could just jump in. Thank you very much, but don't leave. Irma Raimondo? Oh, wait, are we going to have someone translating the whole time or not? Sorry. Okay, all right, okay, I'm just confused, thank you. I just want to make sure we hear from everyone, thank you. Hello, Irma?
Sí, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Irma Raimondo. Este, estoy en la misma situación que están todos los residentes de Villa Serena. Yo ya tengo diez años viviendo ahí, entré en el 2013, y cuando yo entré, la verdad que hasta ahorita supe que firmé una hoja que no me iban a reubicar.
Maybe you want to translate a little bit, so that it's not too much, just bite-sized pieces, please.
So my name is Irma Raimondo. I've been a resident of Villa Serena since 2013, and as of now, I did not know what I was signing when I signed the notice this month.
The relocation, was that the relocation?
El papel de la reloca educacion? Yes.
Okay.
Soy madre soltera, y la verdad que yo necesito que busquen un lugar donde voy a ir con mis hijos, porque lo que me están ofreciendo, que son cinco mil dólares, la verdad que eso no es suficiente, ni para un mes de renta. Renta regular creo que son de dos mil para arriba, y yo no podría pagar eso, y lo que yo quiero es que busquen, que me muevan, porque cuando terminaron en el 340...
Can we get him to translate for a moment, please? Thank you.
So, yeah, so I am a single mom at the moment, and I need help to get relocated. They're offering me five thousand, and I believe five thousand is not enough, given the fact that rent has increased dramatically around the area. Regular rent should be about two thousand, as far as I am concerned.
Ya me contacté todos los números que ellos me dieron, pero que todo está cerrado a la lista de espera, entonces me volví a comunicar con el señor Chris, y lo que él me dijo de que trate yo de moverme a otro lugar, pero pues yo no me puedo mover cerca de, lejos de San Marcos, porque mis hijos van aquí a la escuela, y lo que él también me dijo de que entre varias familias, que rentemos a, no sé, un apartamento o algo así, entre muchas familias, pero eso es posible.
Can you translate, please? Thank you.
So we were given the list, and then when we do show up to these locations, they tell us there's no availability whatsoever. I contacted Chris, and Chris suggested that we should all get together, or try to get together, and amongst multiple families, try to rent an apartment together. That's kind of uncomfortable, and as well, I cannot move far from San Marcos, given the fact that my kids are attending school in San Marcos, so.
Okay, all right.
Ciento veinte días que nos dieron es muy poquito tiempo, porque ya para, este mes ya prácticamente se acabó el mes, entonces yo he tratado de buscar y no he encontrado, y lo que yo necesito de que me reubique, porque no tengo dónde dar con mis hijos.
Okay, could you?
So, yeah, so we were given 120 days, and that's not enough, given the fact that this month is almost over already, and I need help. I don't know where to go with my kids.
Okay, could you ask her to please stay until the end of the meeting, and that we will have some of these questions?
Que por favor se quede, y le van a contestar sus preguntas. Termina la cuenta.
Thank you. Next up will be, oh, jeez, yes, I, is that Arturo? Arturo Ramirez? Sorry, Arturo. I thought your T looked like a G, but I figured it out with my reading glasses, thank goodness.
Hello, thank you for giving the privilege to speak today. So on December 28, 2023, we're given this to meet up at a meeting in the office. It says National Corps of Villa Serena Phase II Resident Community Meeting. So they had not a really, not a very similar slideshow like this, but they did have a slideshow, which they give the presentation, which they pretty much said that we're going to get benefits. And here, I would just say, "Our goals: minimize resident hardship, prioritize responsiveness to residents in unique project circumstances, provide consistent communication with residents, and empathy for residents." So here, "What are the relocation benefits advisory services? This includes referrals to comparable and suitable replacement homes, like expansion of replacement housing to ensure that it meets established standards, help and preparing claim forms for relocation payments, and other assistance to minimize the impact of the move." Payment for moving expenses. Payment for your actual reasonable moving and relocated expenses, or fixed moving expenses and dislocation allowance. Replacement in housing assistance, rental assistance. And more benefits that they said. Will National Corps residents help me find a replacement home? Yes, you will be provided with referrals to housing that has been expected to ensure that it meets established standards. If possible, you will be referred to at least three comparable replacement homes. The maximum financial assistance for which you may qualify will be based on the cost of the most representative comparable replacement home that is available to you. Probably after you become eligible for relocation assistance, National Community Renaissance will inform you of such unit and the maximum payment available. So pretty much, this is what they gave all the residents of the benefits that they will receive. Two weeks later, they said that each individual resident will have a meeting to speak to one of the National Corps members, and two weeks later, they said that they gave us this waiver, which Villa Serena Apartments waiver of relocation benefits, pretty much this is where my mom, she signed it back in 2013, that she will not, pretty much she signed her benefits away, and that they will not be able to help us. So pretty much, I was pretty upset, because at first they showed us this presentation that they were going to give us all these benefits, and then two weeks later, they said that we're not eligible for the benefits. So that's why a lot of people here are upset, and according to the City of San Diego Tenant Protection Guide, they showed us this, pretty much this buyout offer, it's a buyout agreement. And this is in English, they said that they gave it to Spanish, but when I was there, it was only in English, and my mother, she does not, she's not able to read in English. Okay. Buyout agreement, what is it? An agreement where the landlord pays a tenant money or other consideration to vacate their residential rental property. A buyout agreement does not include an agreement to settle a pending unlawful detainer action. Buyout offer. Any discussion or bargaining, whether oral or written, between a tenant and a landlord regarding the possibility of entering into a buyout agreement. A counteroffer by the tenant does not end discussion or bargaining of a buyout offer. Okay. Written disclosure before buyout offer. Before making a buyout offer, the landlord is required to provide each residential tenant a written disclosure that includes a statement that the tenant has a right to not enter into a buyout agreement, a statement that the tenant may choose to consult with an attorney before entering into a buyout agreement, a statement that the landlord may not retaliate against the tenant for declining to enter into or negotiate a buyout agreement. To decline, tenant provides a landlord written notice that tenant's discussion to decline buyout offers is in effect for six months. All tenants of a residential property may take back the decision and receive future buyout offers by providing written notice of that discussion to the landlord. A statement that the tenant is eligible for relocation assistance and the amount of required relocation assistance. Buyout agreement requirements. If you, the tenant, have a right not to enter into this buyout agreement, if you, the tenant, are entitled to relocation assistance under federal, state, or local law, a buyout agreement for less than the amount of the relocation assistance to which you are entitled violates Chapter 9, Article 8, Division 7 of the San Diego Multiple Code and is void. You, the tenant, may choose to consult with an attorney before signing this agreement. And most importantly, if the tenant uses primarily a non-English language to negotiate the buyout agreement, or lease, the landlord should provide a tenant revision of the buyout agreement in English and a translated language to the tenant's use. The landlord should provide these to the tenant at the same time, and they did not provide that.
Okay, so we are not, like, this is a discussion, we're listening to what everyone has to say, but we are not rendering a decision based on anything that was signed.
Yes.
What we're doing this evening is making a decision on whether we approve a loan agreement with the National Corps. So, but if you could please stay till the end of the meeting, like I've told everyone else, we will make sure that we have the questions addressed, and that you are connected with National Corps, and I actually have a few questions of them, too, that hopefully they will be able to answer this evening.
Before I finish? Before I conclude, I found an article online that said National Corps rebuilds eighty-five homes at Villa Serena in San Marcos. First phase of transformation achieved twenty-seven year vision for neighborhood, and I would just like to quote, San Marcos Mayor Rebecca Jones said, "Throughout revising Villa Serena, the city offers a helping hand to San Marcos residents in an effort to combat the current affordable housing crisis, in hopes to do so for many other communities in the future. As an advocate for San Marcos residents, I want all the residents to find a place in our city to call home where worries of unavailable conditions and costs do not impact their life." So I'd just like to conclude with that, and you know, like, I'm here to speak to, as you can tell, most of them are Spanish speakers, Spanish readers, they do not speak English or able to read any English, so yes, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Okay, next up will be Octavio Carrillo, followed by Wendy Padilla. Octavio, thank you, and if you could try to maybe, I'm not judging, but if you could just maybe try to pop in, and so we kind of know in real time what's being said, that would be great. Thank you.
Sí, buenas tardes, soy Octavio Carrillo. Parece que todos sabemos a lo que venimos, ¿verdad? Entonces, este, lo que nosotros queremos es que, pues, por favor, nos ayuden en la ocasión en que estamos ahorita, en el problema que tenemos, de que en realidad no tenemos ahorita realmente dónde ubicarnos, a dónde ir a vivir en estos momentos. Claro, que nos dieron tiempo, nos están dando un poco de tiempo, pero no es suficiente.
Okay, let's get a translation, please, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Octavio Carrillo. So pretty much we all know what we're here for, and I'm begging you to please help us in our situation. It's a very tough situation. We don't know where to go or what to do. Yeah, they gave us some time, but that time is running out quick.
Okay.
Sí, porque sabemos de que, ah, si estamos aquí, es por lo mismo, como le repito, somos gente trabajadora, gente humilde, entonces lo que pedimos nosotros es que nos ayuden, que nos ayuden, pues para ver qué, hasta dónde vamos a llegar, o qué va a pasar con nosotros, porque todos estamos en este mismo nivel, entonces, este, lo que más quiero es, pues, como le repito, que nos ayuden.
So... Yeah, so, again, I'm just here asking for help. You know, I'm a working-class, humble. I'm just pretty much begging you and pleading for you guys to help us. We don't know where we need to go or what's gonna end up happening with us at this point. It's, yeah.
Okay, all right. Could you please ask him to make sure he stays until the end of the meeting? Or, and the end of this item? Thank you. Okay, Wendy Padilla.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Wendy Padilla and... Oh, sorry, I'm not speaking Spanish. Um, nuestra, bueno, nuestra situación, nos, mi esposo y yo y mis tres hijos, um... Sorry, I wanna restart.
Tell her not to be stressed. No, no, it's okay. Don't be stressed. Deep breath, deep breath. You're okay. You're doing good.
Okay. Nosotros, ah, bueno, lo que es Villa Serena, las personas, ellos, los encargados, nos hablaron en abril y, pero nosotros habíamos aplicado hace diez años, si quiere decir.
Yeah, so V Serna reached out to us in April, back in April, but we had applied ten years ago.
Sí, y todo pasó muy rápido. Tuvimos que... Ah, nosotros, donde vivíamos, en nuestra casa anterior, tuvimos que, teníamos un contrato de un año, pero tuvimos que quebrar el contrato, por lo tanto, tuvimos que pagar una penalidad.
So, yeah, so everything happened real quick. We had to move in quick when we got the call. We had a one-year contract with the previous house where we were living at. Unfortunately, we had to break that contract and we had to pay some penalties due to breaking the contract.
Pero fue, para nosotros fue algo muy como, estuvimos muy, um... ¿Cómo se dice? Excited, muy este, contentos porque íbamos a ahorrar, pues dinero, we're gonna save money. Pero también, ah, mis hijos están en la escuela en Vista y todas sus actividades y nuestras actividades están en Vista. Tuvimos que, fue un cambio para ellos y para, para nosotros. Fue un cambio grande para ellos. Pero, pues venimos con la ilusión de poder ahorrar un poco más. Aunque realmente estuvimos, no estuvimos ahorrando mucho porque el gas prices.
So... So we were very happy in the beginning because we were, we thought we were gonna be able to save some money. You know, my kids are in school in Vista. Most of their activities are in Vista. So the change was a little bit drastic for them. And, you know, we really thought we were gonna save some money, but then due to the traveling back and forth, you know, we were not able to save much due to gas prices as well.
Pero estuvimos, ah, pero como ellos, desde un principio cuando firmamos el contrato aquí, ellos nos ofrecieron que nos iban a reubicar como a todos los demás, que no íbamos a estar preocupados por ese sentido. Íbamos a tener una transición muy fácil. Se escuchaba como una, algo muy fácil. We don't, no creímos realmente que fuera a pasar eso, pero tuvimos fe en que nos iban a ayudar porque así lo sentimos.
Okay. So when we signed, we were promised that we were gonna get help getting relocated and they promised us a very easy and pleasant transition. So we were happy and we made the decision to move in.
So, and now after eight months, sorry. Y ahora después de ocho meses, um...
Whenever you, if you wanna speak.
No, it's okay. Sorry. I get confused sometimes.
No, it's good, it's good.
Después de ocho meses que estamos ahí, pues todo ha pasado muy rápido y pues igual que todas las personas que están aquí están, estamos preocupados y este, un poco molestos porque realmente, pues no están cumpliendo lo que prometieron.
So, yeah, so eight months after, this is what the situation we're finding ourselves in. And I'm really worried, at the same time, kinda mad, because we're not getting the help that was promised.
Basically, yeah, same, like, sorry. Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like our situation is the worst because I've been hearing other people, like, that has major problems, like a single mom and all that. We just came mostly to support them, you know, because we're a community. And hopefully, you guys can help us, help them, mostly. We don't, we don't really, they offer us money like everyone else, but we don't really need the money. Mostly, we need like a safe place to live, you know, like, a place to live for everybody, for the kids, for our kids.
All right. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Cesar Salgado, followed by Rodolfina Gutierrez, Gutierrez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cesar Salgado.
Good evening. My name is Cesar Salgado.
Y el motivo que me encuentro el día de hoy aquí
The reason why I am here today
Es por la misma situación que estamos viviendo todos los residentes de Villa Serena.
Is because of the situation that we're all going through at V Serna.
Al igual que todos los demás, nos hicieron firmar una hoja donde nos dicen que estábamos, este, poniendo nuestra firma para que no nos ayudaran en ningún motivo.
Okay. So we were given this waiver to sign, so...
No, que no te van a ayudar.
There's letting us know that they're not gonna help us in any way with the relocation.
Pero algo raro que noté en mi hoja y ya se los hice saber a ellos.
It's something that was weird to me that I brought to their attention.
Mi contrato es el, el año dos mil diecinueve y la hoja tiene fecha del dos mil veinte y mi firma no es la misma.
In my contract, I was signed it in two thousand nineteen. The paper that I was given was printed in two thousand twenty and the signature's not the same.
Les dije a ellos que tenía cómo comprobarlo porque tengo muchos papeles de, de mi firma anteriormente, nunca le he cambiado. Dijeron que me iban a hablar para resolver eso y no lo han hecho.
I told them that I can prove to them that, uh, what I brought up because I have papers that dated from before. They said they were gonna reach out to me to figure that, to correct that mistake. Talk about it.
Igual que a todos, nos hicieron firmar en inglés y después ahora que tuvimos la cita, no la dieron en español.
So just like everybody else, at first they made us sign in English. And now that we had our meeting, second meeting, now they gave it to, gave it to us in Spanish.
También yo tengo mi familia que depende de mí. Son dos niñas de seis años y de dos años y mi esposa.
So I do have a family that depends on me. I have a two-year-old, a six-year-old, and my wife.
Y por el momento no tengo a dónde irme.
And at the moment, I have nowhere to go.
Ellos no están en una lista que podemos brincar, las listas de espera en muchos apartamentos en toda la ciudad de San Marcos.
They gave us a list with all of the locations that we can go and sign and try to apply in all the city of San Marcos.
Ya hemos ido y nos dicen que es esta información falsa, que la ciudad de San Marcos tiene que mandar un comunicado para que nos acepten.
They told us that this was not true when we showed up to these locations. They said that the city of San Marcos has to send out a, pretty much, a notification to them in order for it to be, to have merit.
Hablé con Chris y me dijo que le iba a mandar. Volví a ir y no ha pasado nada. Sigue lo mismo.
I talked to Chris. He said he was gonna send it. I went again and nothing has happened. We're still in the same situation.
Okay, one moment, please. Sylvia, I don't want you to address that right now. I just want you to make sure you write down that. Okay, all right. She will address it a little bit later, after, after.
Okay, puedo seguir?
Can I continue?
Yes, please. I'm sorry. Yes.
También otra situación que me preocupa es como el día de ayer que estuvo lloviendo.
Another thing that worries me is like yesterday that it was raining.
Y me puse a pensar que si el día de mañana no tengo a dónde ir, cómo voy a vivir con mis hijas en la calle.
And I was thinking, I started thinking, if one day I have nowhere to live, where am I gonna be living on the streets with my daughters?
Otra manera es de que estamos a medio ciclo escolar.
Another thing is we're in the middle of a school cycle.
Y ellos como todos lo estamos diciendo, tuvimos la entrevista el veintiocho de enero del dos mil veintitrés.
And like everybody else is saying, we had the interview back in...
No, veinti, en diciembre dos mil veintitrés.
In December of twenty thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Fue la junta que hicieron con todos los residentes de Villa Serena.
That was the meeting that they did with all the residents, the tenants at V Serna.
Pero al igual que aquí, ellos ponen su traductor y las personas que saben inglés no están traduciendo bien.
And same as here, they got their own interpreters, which seems to be biased because they only, they sometimes leave pieces out that some people who are not English speakers or that are limited in English speaking don't quite understand.
Cuando tuvimos la junta individual
When we had our individual meeting
Fue lo mismo que nos dijeron a todos.
It was the same thing that was told to everybody.
Que no tenían ningún beneficio y que solo nos podían ofrecer cinco mil dólares.
That we had no benefits and that all they were offering was five thousand dollars.
Y lo vuelvo a mencionar.
And I would like to reiterate.
Yo soy muy preocupado por mi familia.
I am worried for my family.
Porque mis hijas dependen de mí.
Because my daughters depend on me.
Son dos pequeñas niñas de seis y de dos años.
They're two young girls, two and six years old.
Y solo les quiero pedir que por favor, si nos pueden ayudar con esta situación.
And I would really like to plead with you guys to please help us with this situation.
De corazón se los pediría porque al igual que mí, hay muchas familias que tenemos hijos y que dependen de nosotros.
From the bottom of my heart, I would like to ask you for that help because just like me, there's other families here that were struggling.
Yo entiendo todo lo que ellos nos dicen, pero también es un poco imposible encontrar ahorita un lugar muy rápido.
I understand what Corps is telling us, but it's also very difficult for us to find a place this fast.
Y también me he puesto a pensar
And I also been thinking
Que yo no puedo arriesgar a mis hijas a estar rentando un cuarto con otras personas que no sé qué puedan pasarle, que les puedan hacer algo a ellas.
Moving in with somebody else and putting my daughters at risk, not knowing what other people's intentions are.
Porque es la única opción que me están dando.
Because this is the only option that it seems like I have at this moment.
Solo les pido que nos puedan ayudar porque ellos aquí dicen que van a contestar nuestras preguntas, pero siempre nos dicen lo mismo. No sé si porque se encuentran en este lugar, pero ya cuando están en su oficina, es muy diferente la situación.
Because they always promise us that they're gonna answer our questions and attend to our grievances, but that's maybe because they're standing before you guys at the moment. But when it comes to us and them being, it's totally different.
Y por último, el último que les quería decir.
And the last thing that I would like to let you, let you guys know.
Se corrió el rumor de que, dicen que nos quedemos callados, que porque no saben en lo que nos podemos meter.
They, I've heard rumors that it was said out, that we better stay quiet because we don't know what kind of trouble we can get into.
No sé si sea verdad o sea mentira.
I don't know if it's true, truth or false.
Solo quería dejárselo saber también eso.
I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Y es todo lo que tengo que decir y se los agradecería que si por favor pudieran ayudarnos con esta situación.
That's all I would like to say and I would really appreciate it.
Ustedes como padres de familia saben, pues que uno es primordial su, su, su familia.
Yeah. So I'm sure some of you guys are parents as well and I'm sure you guys understand that you guys, just like us, families are priority.
Gracias.
Thank you. Cesar, maybe you could translate. We, we've heard everything that you've said and we really appreciate. And no one needs to be in fear of speaking up because that's what we want you to do and we're your representatives to hear you and, and to make sure that your voices are heard. And we have National Corps here this evening and we will definitely do everything within our power to make sure that they are hearing every word that you're saying and make sure that they are taking care of everyone and, and addressing your, your questions and your concerns.
Cesar, ah, me da, estamos, estoy escuchando todo lo que tú has dicho y quiero que sepas que nadie tiene que tener miedo de hablar. Nosotros estamos aquí como tus representantes para escucharte y también tenemos a National Corps aquí también presente, que nosotros vamos a hablar con ellos para que asegurarse de que, ah, lo que te escuchen.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you. Next up is Rodolfina Gutierrez, followed by Salvador Gomez.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rodolfina y me apello a Gutierrez. Buenas noches.
Good evening. My name is Rodolfina Gutierrez.
Estamos todos en esta situación muy difícil de los Villa Serena. Hace cinco años, yo llegué a vivir ahí.
We're all in the same situation at V Serna. I firstly, I first arrived five years ago.
Cuando yo firme un contrato, eh, yo firme algo que estaba renunciando a todos los beneficios de Villa Serena, pero estaba en inglés, yo no me di cuenta. No sabía lo que estaba firmando.
When I signed the contract or the waiver, apparently I was giving up all my rights and benefits. I did not know that because the paper was in English.
Cuando apenas nos hicieron la junta, ahí me di cuenta de que van a tirar los apartamentos y que yo había firmado un contrato, una hoja donde yo no sabía qué es lo que había firmado.
When we first had the meeting, that's when I was first told, made aware that the premises was gonna be demolished and, yeah.
Sí. Eh, llegué en el dos mil diecinueve y este, ahora que fuimos otra vez a la meeting, nos dijeron que, me dijeron que yo había llegado en el dos mil veinte y no es verdad.
So when I got to V Serna, it was in two thousand nineteen. And this time that I got, when I, that I had my meeting, they said that I actually had arrived in two thousand twenty and that's untrue.
Ahora no están desalojando, pero no tenemos a dónde ir. Eh, nos dieron una hoja donde ya hemos ido a buscar a todos los apartamentos y nos dicen que están ocupados. No hay espacio para nosotros. Lo que yo quiero es que ellos nos reubiquen a otro lado, porque si no, dónde nos vamos a ir.
So now they're telling us that we have to move. And yeah, they gave us a list of all the premises that we can go and apply. But every time that we go there, we are told that there's no room for us, there's no units available. And I just want them to help us relocate because we don't know where to go.
Yo tengo dos hijas que están en escuela y sí trabajo, pero gano muy poquito. No me alcanzaría para pagar en otro lado, que no sea de bajos recursos.
So I do have two daughters that go to school. I do work, but I don't make enough. And that's the reason why I am in this situation with my low income and this affordable housing, which was...
Lo que necesitamos es que si por favor nos pueden ayudar a todos los que estamos ahí porque todos estamos en la misma situación.
If you could please help, help us all because we're all in the same situation.
No tenemos a dónde ir.
We have nowhere to go.
¿Qué vamos a hacer?
What are we gonna do?
Sí, es todo. Gracias.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Could you make sure she?
Que se quede dice para que vayan a, van a contestar sus preguntas.
Salvador Gomez? Yeah, let's get the poor man water. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Buenas noches a todos. Y yo estoy aquí también para exponer la situación casi que por lo que estamos aquí todos los del vecindario de Villa Serena de los apartamentos. Yo llevo trece años viviendo ahí. Sí, trece años. Cuando yo llegué ahí, pues tenía mi familia, pero ahora ya mi familia creció y ya no tengo niños, pero pues entiendo de que eh, es necesario una... que sea esta renovado y, y que seamos más actualizados en la vivienda y, y pues, eh, entiendo...
Un momento, can we?
Good evening. My name is Salvador Gomez. So I'm here because of the situation that's going on at V Serna. I've been there for thirteen years. When I first moved in there, I was living with my family. My family grew up and moved on. And I understand that we need to move forward with renovating the premises with more, with the newer technologies and new necessities within the buildings.
El día veintiocho de diciembre fuimos convocados a una reunión de toda la comunidad de Villa Serena para serlos informados de que esos apartamentos iban a ser renovados. Todo se parecía muy, que estaba muy bien hasta ahí.
So back in, the eighteenth of December of two thousand twenty-three, we all had a meeting. we would all had a meeting and they told us that, you know, the premises were gonna be remodeled. And everything was good so far.
Se los dijo en esa reunión que íbamos a ser citados individualmente, eh, por, eh, para una entrevista, para ser reubicados, para, eh, con el, el, el programa de, 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 ¿cómo se llama este? El de, que estaba a cargo de, para llevar la construcción.
So then we, they followed up with it in individual meetings, um, and there, they said that we were there, that's when they were gonna tell us how they were gonna help us with the relocation, ah, situation.
Yo estuve esperando muy emocionado para ir a esa entrevista porque dije no pues vamos a, a tener esa entrevista para ayuda de nosotros que la necesitamos ahorita porque pues nos vamos a hacer reubicados y yo eso yo lo tenía en mente que iba a ser reubicado y con ese propósito yo atendí la cita, la, a la entrevista.
Yeah, so I was waiting for that, um, that follow-up meeting. I was very happy and anxious at the same time because, you know, I was happy that they were gonna help us, ah, with the relocating, ah, process.
Hice la cita para el día veintisiete de enero. Fu- atendí a la cita y me sorprendí con lo que, la información que me dieron. Porque la información que me dieron no era la que yo me esperaba, sigan.
So, I made my appointment, ah, my meeting for the twenty-seventh of January and I was surprised, ah, with the information that was given to me at that time.
Cuando estuve en la entrevista me dijeron de que yo cuando entré, cuando yo me mudé a vivir a ese, a esos apartamentos, yo firme un documento que, que me hacía no calificable para beneficios de reubicación y, y me dijeron usted firmó esto cuando entró el dos mil dieciséis. Les hablé, le dije dónde está la hoja, eh, que yo firme y me sacaron una copia, le dije sáqueme, yo pues quiero ver una original. Me dijeron que no, que no tenía una original.
Okay, so when, um, so when I, when I was, ah, when I went to my meeting, I was surprised because they gave me a paper stating that I had signed all my benefits away, ah, that I was gonna get no help with the relocation, ah, and they said that I was, I, it was signed on twenty sixteen. They, I asked them to show me proof with an original copy of it, but they were not able to provide that for me.
Pero la, la copia que tenía decía de que yo renunciaba a esos beneficios. Pero por, de parte de la, de, de la comunidad, bueno, de, de la organización que está llevando a cabo este proyecto, me iban a ayudar con cinco mil dólares. Pues, eh, les dije yo a la señorita está ahí conmigo. Eso no, no, no me ayudan, les, para irme yo a, a.
So, yeah, so that paper, ah, allegedly was me signing up, giving up my rights, ah, and benefits. They said that, um, they were gonna give me, ah, five thousand and I told that young lady that was helping me out that was, that was not enough.
Y le dije ahí, bueno, le dije y los van a reubicar porque eso, de eso se trató la junta que tuvimos el día veintiocho de diciembre. No señor, me dijo, usted no califica, usted, eh, busque y me dio una lista de lo mismo que le dieron a todos los residentes. Cosa de que pues ya busqué y tampoco la misma, la misma situación que no hay vacantes, no hay, hay una lista de espera para a largo plazo y, y la verdad es esta, ya tenemos una fecha que cada día que pasa pues, pues se hace corto el tiempo y, y es preocupante.
So, yeah, so they, they, when I told her, um, that I needed help, they said, well, unfortunately, you don't qualify for any of the benefits. All we can give you is the five thousand. Gave me the list that everybody else got in regards to the other locations that we can go and sign, sign up and hopefully get a, a unit there. But every time, just like everybody else as well, I've driven there and they tell me that there's no units available and that they cannot help us. And the time is running out as well, every day that goes by.
El tiempo se, se, se acorta y, y tenemos ya para el día primero de, de, de mayo y le dije yo a la, a la señorita que estaba ahí antes de firmarle porque ella me dijo firmele aquí y esta es una información que yo le estoy dando. No está firmando para renunciar a su derecho que de todas maneras no tiene derecho, me dijo porque usted pues no califica. Entonces pues, no se me notificó que cuando yo entré a vivir ahí que yo no iba a tener derechos a largo plazo y, y ese plazo es ahorita, entonces.
Yeah, so when I was signing in, ah, when I was signing that waiver, ah, the, the, the young lady told me, ah, this is just information that I'm giving you, you're not signing away any type of benefits. Ah, she said, besides, you don't have benefits, any, any benefits, that's what, that's what I was told. Um, and I just wanna bring this up to you again, time is running out and, um, and, and you know with, oh, and then, um, I, I, when I initially moved in, I was never told that this, ah, was gonna happen. I thought this was for the long term, but then this is happening at the moment.
Y por último pues estoy de acuerdo de que sean renovados esos apartamentos pero pues con lo mismo de que estamos todos aquí que necesitamos la ayuda de como se los ofreció desde un principio que sí vamos a ser reubicados porque la hoja que, que dieron es esta. Llegó por primero donde dice que iba a ser la junta el día veintiocho y aquí dice que, que íbamos a ser reubicados, relocation. Entonces yo lo entendí de esa manera, a lo mejor pues, pues lo entendí mal pero es lo que dice aquí y yo pues.
And lastly, I would like to let you guys know that I understand that the units needs to be, need to be remodeled. I get that, but initially when we had the, ah, meeting back in, on the twenty-eighth, um, on the, on the flyer it says, ah, to help you with the relocation, but now we're here and that's, maybe I misunderstood, but that's what it says on the flyer.
Okay.
Bueno, gracias.
So, so if you could just wait until the end of the meeting, um, we will hopefully have some of the questions addressed but also make sure that, um, the, ah, National Corps, ah, team will be in contact with you.
Que se espere, ah, para que vayan a contestar algunas de sus preguntas, también no todas pero algo más, sus preguntas y también para que ellos tomen su nombre y.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, thank you. Uh, Angelica Santiago.
Welcome. Good evening, council members and mayor. Um, thank you so much for having me here and having the space. Uh, my name is Angelica Santiago and I am a community educator here in North County. Um, I'm with Universidad Popular as maybe some of you or, I hope all of you know we do have our office here on Autumn Drive. Um, so I'm just, I'm not a resident of Villa Serena, but I did wanted to advocate for our community members and residents. Uh, first of all, thank you to both for doing interpretation. Interpretation is very difficult, very hard. I cannot do it myself even though I'm bilingual. So, that is an ask for the city of San Marcos. I believe this is something that city of San Marcos should have and should be providing. In addition, um, I've been helping community members apply for some of these complences using the same, um, sheet that they were provided, ah, many, many months, throughout the months. And it's, trust me, it's such a tedious, very difficult, very confusing process even for myself. I've been helping some residents and we've been getting rejection letters, you don't qualify, you don't make enough. Very, very difficult. So my ask is to hear what our residents are asking and then what, like Arturo mentioned, what is the helping hand that the city of San Marcos is going to be providing during this moment to these residents? To these residents and also our future residents because we do understand that redevelopment will be happening, it's happening, right? But what is that transition going to look like? What is that help? Um, because it's very, very needed. Um, so nomás quería mencionar que, um, mi nombre es Angelica Santiago y soy miembro, um, soy como, ah, educadora comunitaria aquí en el condado norte de San Diego. Um, yo soy del programa Universidad Popular que nuestra oficina está en la calle de Autumn Drive. No soy residente de los apartamentos de Villa Serena, ah, pero sí quería abogar ah, y también escuchar sus voces que es muy importante. Ah, les quiero agradecer a los dos miembros que pudieron hacer interpretación. Yo entiendo que esto es algo muy difícil, muy complejo que yo misma no lo puedo hacer ah, sabiendo que sé los dos lenguajes y creo que esto es algo que la ciudad de San Marcos debería y debe que incluir, ah, lo cual no, no se hizo. Y también quería mencionar que yo he estado ayudando a miembros de la comunidad a aplicar para estos apartamentos de bajos recursos y otros apartamentos usando la misma hoja que ustedes tienen y que les han dado. Y quería mencionar que este ha sido un, ah, un sistema muy difícil para mí, muy complejo. Hemos recibido muchas tarjetas, cartas de rechazo, no calificamos. Solo entiendo que este es un proceso muy difícil y entiendo que la renovación de muchos de esos, ah, apartamentos ha pasado, está pasando y va a pasar en el futuro. So, qué es lo que la ciudad, ah, de San Marcos nos va prove, prove, ver? Qué nos va a poder apoyar en esta transición para todos ustedes y también en el futuro cuando haga otra renovación. Um, so thank you so much for hearing me and I'm, um, thrilled to see what other actions, you know, both the camp, ah, National Corps and also the city of San Marcos is able to, to provide. Um, so nomás quería agradecer y también escuchar lo que National Corps y la ciudad de San Marcos va a poder, um, poder ayudarnos. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to go back to, um, uh, some of our speakers that I had called their name, but I think I might have said, I think it's actually Annalisa Sia and not Annalia Sia. Do we have anyone here by that name? In hopes that maybe she hasn't left, okay, and then Olivia Ramirez? No? Um, okay, then Maribel Sol, Soli, Solachi. Hello.
Hello everyone, I am Maribel Solachi. I am a community organizer and activist and I am also a San Marcos resident for twenty years. Eh, buenas noches a todos, soy Maribel Solachi. Soy miembro de esta comunidad, es residente de San Marcos. Soy activista y soy organizadora comunitaria y quiero decirles paisanos que no están solos. And I want to say all of them.
Could we get a translation on that? I'm sorry.
And I want to say all of the people that is here that they are not alone. That's why they, they clap because they feel accompanied for somebody, okay? And then I want to say like, eh, San Marcos City, I think you have to provide translation or interpretation because, eh, we are a diverse community. If you can look of the statistics, the San Marcos, eh, school district, fifty percent of the, of the school district is Spanish speakers. And that, that will help you to understand how the community is diverse. Eh, bueno, yo les digo que, eh, yo creo que la ciudad de San Marcos tiene que proveer traducción porque la comunidad de San Marcos es tan diversa y si vamos a las estadísticas de los estudiantes de, de, del distrito escolar de San Marcos, el cincuenta por ciento de los estudiantes, este, hablan español y pues también sus familias. And you know, since we start this meeting, we start with a prayer, with the pastor and we, eh, say under God and we also start with the pledge of allegiance and we say, eh, under God and we say justice and, and liberty for all, something like that, okay? Entonces empezamos esta, esta junta con una oración, nos pusimos bajo Dios y también con los términos que nos dice la, el, el, esto a la bandera donde dice que todos vamos a recibir justicia y libertad. And I think people living oppression, eh, they are not free. Y yo creo que la gente que está vivi- viviendoprimida no está teniendo justicia ni está teniendo libertad. And you know, eh, eh, Mayor Rebecca Jones, probably you didn't notice, but this was a conflict of interest. Eh, eh, allowing the lady to interpret her for the people that is there, it was a conflict, a clear, eh, conflict of interest. Y creo que también debemos de resaltar que la Mayor Rebecca Jones permitió que la señora que trabaja en los departamentos hiciera la interpretación y eso ya es un conflicto de intereses. Entonces eso no lo debemos permitir porque están siendo juez y parte. Otra cosa, another thing that I want to say is like, in San Diego County, we are a living, we are having a housing crisis and we already know that these people is going to be part of the, eh, they will be part of the, eh, eh, let me remember the word, it's really hard word. Eh, homeless, homeless community. Todos sabemos que en el condado de San Diego hay una crisis de vivienda y todos sabemos que estas personas realmente están siendo mandadas a ser parte de las personas que viven sin hogar. Hay already call of the apartments that do li- that you guys list on the city of San Marcos and no one of these complex has opening or vacance for people. Entonces yo ya llamé a todos los, a todos los departamentos que, que están en la lista del condado de San Diego y no, nadie tiene disponibles departamentos, entonces esto es como una trampa, okay? And, eh, these people receive the notification after Christmas and I don't think they have a happy new year. Estas personas recibieron la notificación de ser dejados, desalojados después de Navidad y yo no creo que ellos tuvieron un feliz año. They have kids, they are hard workers, they clean houses, they work on construction. Ellas son personas muy trabajadoras, tienen niños, limpian casas, son trabajadores de la construcción. But the kids go to these schools and we already know like the, they will start suffering mental health. Todos sabemos que los, estos son niños de la comunidad y que van en estas escuelas y ellos pueden empezar a experimentar, eh, problemas de salud mental. And, eh, I just want to say like, they are experiencing emergency. Like yesterday, we experienced raining emergency or storm emergency and these people is experiencing emergency. And, eh, I was reading here in a webpage in the sanmarcos.net and that is a picture and, and Mayor Jones says, "We want our residents to know that we are committed to affordable housing. The benefits of adding in this complex not only includes housing for all financial levels, but list to citywide improvements for the entry community." Entonces yo les decía que leí un artículo aquí en sanmarcos.net que es la revista de aquí de la ciudad y lo que decía la Mayor Jones donde ella dice que los beneficios de la, de las, de las departamentos de bajos ingresos, ellos traen un, un, traen varios beneficios y dice que esto ayuda también a, a que la ciudad, para, para que la ciudad pueda, eh, que, que esto ayuda a toda la comunidad. And I think you have to honor your word. And, and I think you already know because you authorize, you as a city, you already authorize the Villa Serena apartments to re, re, rebuild. And you know before, before this meeting, you already know that this will happen. Entonces yo creo que ustedes como ciudad autorizaron el cambio, autorizaron la remodelación mucho antes que todas estas personas fueran notificadas. Entonces ustedes ya sabían lo que iba a pasar. And I think you have to, you have to help them. We already know that these people is going to be homeless soon and that's why we are here. Y todos sabemos que estas personas están siendo mandadas a vivir en la calle y a vivir sin hogar y ustedes necesitan ayudar. Soy Maribel, I am Maribel, eh, thanks.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Can I, can I have you come up for just a moment to translate, sir? Thank you.
Yes.
I, I just want to, um, say something in defense of, of what's happening here. What we are, what we are deciding here this evening is about a loan for Villa Serena. So certainly, I, I, I'm glad that we have all these folks here and we can hear their voices, but that's, that's not specifically what is part of, to say that we knew that something was. that everyone would be here, I wouldn't say that that is a fair assessment, but we want to hear everyone's voice.
Okay, solo quiero decir algo en lo que la señorita dijo. No, no estamos aquí porque ya se aprobó el préstamo. Esta junta es porque todavía no hemos aprobado el préstamo para que se reconstruyan los apartamentos de Villa Serena. Solo más quería decir eso en defensa, nosotros no sabíamos que se iba a reconstruir, todavía no se aprobado el préstamo.
And, 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 and we want to make sure that, that the developer here is going to hear everyone's voice and make sure that they are responding to all of their concerns.
Y nos vamos a asegurar de que nosotros todos escuchamos sus preguntas y vamos a tratar de contestarle la mayor posible.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, next up will be Alicia Romero followed by Maria Mendoza.
My name is Alicia Romero and since there was already a threat, I am afraid and I will not speak.
A threat? No, 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 no one was threatening? No, no, no! No, no, no threats, please, please, we want to hear your voice. I actually said that we want to hear everyone's voice.
Sí, dice que no tenga miedo, que no hubo ninguna amenaza, que por favor ella quiere escuchar a todos hablar.
No, no, please. No, no, please, no, not at all, no.
Bueno, mi nombre es Alicia Romero. Gracias a este programa que yo encontré, fui elegible para estos apartamentos. Yo le agradezco porque me dieron una vivienda para vivir. Este, soy madre soltera, muchas gracias. Pero yo firme este contrato en el 2017.
So my name is Alicia Romero and I want to thank this program because I was selected to, and given the opportunity to have a housing. I signed this contract back in 2017. I am a single mom.
Aquí está una hoja donde yo junto con el contrato, donde, donde yo firme el... Donde yo firme este contrato con diferentes fechas. Está, está este contrato 8/2 del 2020 y luego abajo está... 9/1 del 2019. Entonces yo, no recuerdo yo haber firmado este contrato. Mis iniciales, estas no son las mías. Entonces este, eso es lo que yo estoy un poco confundida porque no creo yo haber firmado este contrato el día que entré yo a Villa Serena.
So, here is a copy of the signed waiver as well as the contract when I initially moved in. As you can tell on the waiver, there are some initials that are, that I can tell you are not mine. I did not initial those, that paper. And also on one of them, it says that it was signed on August 2nd, 2020 and then on the bottom it states September 1st, 2019. So I can tell you that this is not me who signed it.
Hace aproximadamente tres meses nos dieron otro contrato para renovar, para seguir estando... No recuerdo qué fecha porque mi memoria no está muy bien. Pero este, nos dieron a firmar hace tres meses nuevo contrato.
So about three months ago, they gave us another contract. I don't recall what the terms were, but it was a renewal for our lease.
Yo siempre, normalmente yo pido una copia del contrato que yo firmo cada que se renueva los contratos, pero yo pedí una copia y no me dieron nada.
I usually ask for a copy every time I sign my renewal and at this time, I asked, this last time that I did, I asked for a copy and I was denied one.
Y pues eso es, eso es todo. Con miedo y todo, pero lo di, digo.
And that's, that's all I would like to say. I am in fear, but I was able to tell you guys.
Okay, I'd like to address that. I don't know, okay. When, when I spoke to staff this afternoon, early this afternoon, I asked that there be someone that could help translate. So not anyone in specific, not anyone exact, I just asked for, for help in translation. Could you, could you?
So you asked...
No, could you, could you, could you just repeat what I said?
So cuando esta junta iba a comenzar, yo pregunté si había alguien que podía ayudar a interpretar.
Because I want everyone's voice to be heard this evening.
Porque quería que todas sus voces se escucharan esta noche.
And I'm not sure what got lost in the translation, but there was absolutely no threat of anything. I'm not sure how that happened, could you please mention?
Okay, y no hubo ninguna amenaza, no sé dónde se perdió la... Dónde se estaba... Dónde se estaba interpretando, no supe dónde se perdió.
Confusion maybe.
It was right here that was told, it was Caesar who mentioned that, that he heard that there was a threat already made.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought something that I said came off like that. No, I don't, I don't believe, okay. So, we're here as your representatives? The city council and the city is here as your representative, could you...
Oh, discúlpeme, yo pensé que nosotros habíamos dicho algo.
No, no, oh, no.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
De la oficina.
Nosotros somos sus representantes de ustedes o nosotros los representamos a ustedes.
And we're your advocates.
Yo creo que este, estábamos muy, muy, en la junta que ellos dieron del abril del 28. Este, creo que nos, estoy segura que no escuche mal, nos dieron a conocer, a todos, a todos nos dieron a conocer que nos iban a ayudar y todos son muy bonitos, nos ilusionaron. Y ahora nos dicen que no nos van a ayudar, pues entonces cómo, cómo, cómo sé... O sea, yo me estoy, estoy, estoy muy mal de los nervios.
Could you translate that?
So, so the meeting that we had on the 28, we were told initially that we were all going to be helped with the relocation, but now they're telling us that they're not, they're not going to help us and I'm really, I'm suffering from a condition, this nervous, a nerve condition.
Y yo espero pues que nos ayuden, vamos a pagar renta de todos modos. A donde quiera que nos acomoden, vamos a pagar renta. Solamente no nos queremos quedar en la calle.
And I just want for you guys to help us, please. We're going to pay rent no matter where we go, we're, obviously we're going to pay rent. We just do not want to be homeless.
We don't want anyone to be homeless either.
No queremos que nadie también sea...
Okay, pues muchas gracias, este, créame que no quería yo pasar porque mire cómo me tiemblan mis piernas, mis pies y todo mi cuerpo por miedo.
Thank you, thank you for listening to me. In reality, I was very nervous and I was in fear, but look at me shaking, but I was able to say it.
Don't, don't, don't be nervous, you're... Thank you for being brave and public speaking is very tough for everyone, just so you know.
Gracias por hablar en público, eso a veces es un poco espantoso.
First time I'm speaking.
Okay, so I think I met Alicia Romero? No? That was, okay, I wasn't sure. I have, I have a lot going on up here. Maria Mendoza followed by Bertha Hasuendez? Hasuendez? I don't know, I can't read that, maybe I should put my glasses on.
Muy buenas noches, mi nombre es María Mendoza.
Good evening, my name is Maria Mendoza.
Yo me mudé a los apartamentos en el año 2013 y yo en esa ocasión la entrevista fue con la manager, era su nombre Valeria, ella no era bilingüe. Lo único que yo pude alcanzar a entender es que se me notificó que yo firmaba una hoja.
Okay, so I initially moved in into Villa Serena in 2013. When I moved in, I signed my, I did my paperwork with Valeria, who was non-bilingual.
El nombre es Valeria?
Usted dijo que usted firmó el papel con Valeria.
Ajá, con Valeria, sí. Y ella todo me lo dijo en inglés y yo lo único que entendí era que ese papel decía que los apartamentos se iban a derrumbar en un futuro y que por eso yo tenía la decisión de aceptar esos apartamentos, el apartamento en la condición que estaba con la carpeta rota, el refrigerador viejo, estufa vieja, este, la pintura vieja, un inmueble muy deteriorado con hongo.
Okay, so, so I was told that in the future they were going to tear down these apartments, but part of the talks were that I would have to accept the apartment in the condition that it was given to me with dirty carpet, there were some mold on some of the furniture, it was old. So that was what was, those were the terms and conditions that I was, that I was told that I was going to have to accept if I wanted to move in.
Mi situación era muy vulnerable porque era madre soltera con dos hijos, uno de diez años y otro de trece años que estaban estudiando. Entonces yo me vi obligada a aceptarlo porque era lo único que yo podía ofrecerle a mi familia.
Okay, at that time, I was going through a very vulnerable time in my life. I was a single mom with two young boys at that time aged 10 and 13. So I was kind of, I had to make a decision and I pretty much felt like I had to accept those terms in order to move in.
A mi pregunta para ustedes que saben, que si se puede abusar de las personas de su vulnerabilidad? Porque yo siento que fui abusada en ese momento de que se veía que yo necesitaba y que era una persona de bajos ingresos a firmar algo y que si es, eso es posible que uno tenga que renunciar a tus derechos, que por ser una persona de bajos ingresos tú no tengas derechos.
And my question to you guys would be, since you guys probably know better than I do, is it right to take advantage of somebody's vulnerability? The stress that I was going through, that I was in a way forced to sign this, my rights away, my benefits away at that time? That's, that's a question for you guys.
Well, we were not really supposed to be answering questions. We will at the end of the meeting talk about what our, what our responsibilities are and we will make sure that National Corps addresses all of your concerns. We weren't there, obviously, during the, during this time, so we can't really speak to certain, you know, to everyone's conditions, but no, no one should ever be taken advantage of.
Dice que no, en realidad no estábamos aquí para contestar preguntas, así vamos a tratar de contestar la mayoría de sus preguntas. Nosotros no estábamos ahí cuando los contratos se firmaron, eso no sabemos, pero no, nadie debería de tomar ventaja sobre sus situaciones.
Lo, lo que yo les quiero pedir es ayuda para que se lleve a cabo las cosas que ellos nos han prometido. Si desde en el 2013 cuando yo ingresé a esa propiedad, ellos ya tenían en mente que los iban a derrumbar, ¿por qué siguieron metiendo tantas personas? Ahorita estamos hablando de aproximadamente entre sesenta, sesenta y cinco familias que se van a quedar sin hogar. ¿Ustedes creen que sea posible que en cinco meses esas sesenta y cinco familias encontremos un hogar cuando estamos a medio ciclo escolar?
So, I'm here so asking for help so that they can keep their word. When I moved in, in, back in 2013, yeah, they already knew that this premises was going to be demolished. But my question is why would they keep on moving people in? There's going to be roughly sixty-five families that have to move out now and we're in the middle of a, in the middle of a school year. I don't think that this is possible.
Ellos han actuado con alevoz y ventaja porque nos han hecho firmar un documento renunciando a nuestros derechos. Pero a nosotros quién nos respalda? Nosotros por tener una propiedad nos vimos obligados a firmar algo por necesidad. Y yo en lo personal, cada que renovaba mi contrato le preguntaba a la persona qué iba a pasar que si nos iban a, que si iban a derrumbar los apartamentos.
Yeah, so, to me, it seems like they were taking advantage of everybody's situation by making us and forcing, you know, we're kind of forcing us to sign those waivers and giving up our rights. So...
Que yo en lo personal siempre les preguntaba que si iban a derrumbar los apartamentos.
Yeah, and then every time that I was, I signed my renewal for my lease, I would always ask them, what's going to happen with the apartments?
La respuesta de la persona que en ese momento estaba de manager, porque han habido demasiadas managers, decían que no me preocupara que porque cuando, que primero iban a ser el edificio 340.
Okay, and the answer that I would get was not to worry about it because at first they were going to demolish the 340 side first.
Y la promesa era que nos iban a dar prioridad los que vivíamos en el 339 para removernos a esa propiedad que iban a construir, que ya está construida y no nos dieron nada.
And we were promised that we were going to have priority. So we were, people living in the 339 unit, we're going to have priority to move in the 340 once they were remodeled and once they were, we did not get the priority and we did not get that opportunity.
Lo más importante para mí en este momento es pedirles ayuda, suplicarles ayuda a ustedes que cumplan lo que han dicho de ayudarnos con una reubicación o que nos den suficiente tiempo posible para nosotros encontrar, lo cual es muy difícil de encontrar porque las rentas están demasiado caras y se supone que por eso vivimos ahí porque la mayoría somos personas de bajos ingresos.
So, I'm pleading with you for help in relocating us or to give us a little bit more time as it's extremely difficult to find another place to live or to move in as rent is extremely high and the reason why we're living where we're at is because most of us are low-income earners.
En lo personal, para mí, mi situación es muy difícil porque tengo una niña con una limitación que tiene autismo y ella no puede convivir con muchas personas.
And personally, it's very difficult for me because I have a young daughter who suffers from autism and she cannot live amongst a lot of people.
Entonces yo no podría tomar la acción de irme a vivir con más personas porque yo no lo puedo, yo no tengo esa opción. Yo necesito tener un lugar solamente para mi familia, no puedo compartir con más para poder aminorar los ingresos.
So unfortunately, it's, it would be extremely hard for me to move in with somebody else. I would actually need my own place due to my daughter's condition to have my own place.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you for coming this evening.
Okay, eso es todo, gracias.
Tell her not to leave, don't leave, sorry. Bertha Hasuendez followed by Guadalupe Barrios. Thank you, Bertha.
Hola, me llamo Berta Jacuindes.
Hello, my name is Berta Jacuindes.
Pues básicamente es casi lo mismo que han dicho todos los vecinos. Nos dijeron que nos iban a realocar, cosa que pues al parecer no lo van a hacer.
So basically, it's the same as all my other neighbors have stated. They promised us with helping us to relocate and it seems like that's not going to happen.
Este, yo ya fui a los departamentos donde, de la lista que nos dieron porque cuando a mí me hicieron la cita me dijeron que nos iban a dar prioridad en todos, en todos los departamentos que venían en la lista.
So I already went to all of the apartments that, that were on the list that was given to us because we were told that we were supposed to give priority on all of these other locations.
Cuando yo fui ahí me dijeron que las cosas no funcionaban así, que me habían informado mal.
When I went there, they told me the things did not work that way, that I was misinformed.
Y que pues tenía que ponerme en una lista de espera que en algunos lugares serán de un año, dos años hasta cuatro años.
And I was told that I had to be put on a waitlist that would be from one to four years of wait time.
Y pues ahora, en esos tiempos yo perdí dos... Y pues ahora, es, en estos tiempos yo perdí dos días de trabajo.
And in that time, I lost two days of work.
Y este, pues ahorita estoy preocupada, soy mamá soltera, tengo tres hijos, al igual que todos pues vamos, están a la mitad del ciclo escolar.
And I'm very worried because I am a single mom of three as well, with my children being in the middle of a school cycle.
Pues hay personas que sus hijos usan el, el base de la escuela y pues eso pienso que va a ser un problema también.
And my kids, I use the school bus, and I feel like this is gonna create a problem with that as well.
Y pues, porque nos tenían que dar información falsa que nos iban a ayudar cuando en realidad ellos sabían que no lo iban a hacer.
And why would they give us false information stating that they were gonna help us getting relocated and knowing that they were not going to?
Pues eso es todo.
And that's it.
Thank you, thank you for coming, and don't leave, we're going to have some information. Oh, I'm sorry, I think I, that was Bertha. Guadalupe, followed by Giovanni? Got a lot of stuff up here, I'm not messing up too bad.
Mi nombre es Guadalupe Barrios. Yo entré a vivir a Villa Serena en el 2017.
Hello, my name is Guadalupe Barrios, and I moved in to Villa Serena back in 2017.
Al año que yo entré a vivir a Villa Serena, yo pedí un apartamento de dos recamas porque yo tengo dos niños pequeños y solamente vivo en un apartamento de una recámara.
Initially, when I moved in, I asked for a two-bedroom unit, because I have two kids, but I'm currently living in a one-bedroom unit.
Nunca recibí respuesta, no me, no me movieron a otro apartamento, este, estuve ahí porque no tenía dónde ir.
And they never gave me an answer, they never reached out to me, and I, and I accepted that because I have nowhere to go, so I'm still living there.
Cuando construyeron el, la otra área, de, ¿qué es? El 340, me emocioné porque yo llené una aplicación para moverme de los apartamentos donde estoy ahorita para el 340.
So when they rebuilt the 340 side, I was very happy because I filled out an application to move from the 339 to the 340 once they were rebuilt.
Llené una aplicación y este, después de que pregunté, mi aplicación nunca apareció para moverme al 340.
So I filled out an application, but when they were built and apparently my application never came up to move into the 340 units.
Ahora me dan esta, esta información que tengo que irme, igual, igual que todos firmé un papel que no sabía de qué se trataba, solamente me dijeron ahora que ya nos están removiendo.
So, just like many others, I also signed a waiver, not knowing what was written on that waiver, and I just came to find out that they're pretty much kicking us out.
Yo estoy de acuerdo que se construya el lugar, lo que yo por favor les pido es de que nos den un lugar donde vivir, porque la verdad los estamos viviendo en muy malas condiciones en los apartamentos donde estamos.
So I definitely agree with the remodeling of the, of the unit, but all I'm asking is to please help to find a place where to move, because even at the moment, in the conditions that we're living, they're very poor.
Ahorita con la lluvia que hubo, este, las paredes están mojadas, el ba, este, toca uno las paredes y está el agua en la pared, en el piso, ya hay agua, estamos viviendo ahí por necesidad y por favor, este, necesitamos la ayuda urgentemente.
So, now with the rainy days, the walls got wet, if we go and we touch the walls, they're actually wet. We're there because of necessity, and we really would like some help.
Yo soy una mamá soltera con dos niños, pero no me rindo, yo sigo adelante trabajando, luchando a la vida y yo cumplo con mis impuestos, con mi renta, siempre he cumplido con mi renta cada mes.
So I'm a single mom with two kids, and I don't give up, I keep fighting forward, I work, pay my taxes, I pay my rent every single time of the month.
Entonces estoy agradecida por la oportunidad que me dieron de vivir ahí, pero sí les pido por favor que nos manden a un lugar donde podamos pagar una renta. Yo ya fui a aplicar apartamentos de precio regular, me exigen que, que tengo que ganar lo doble de lo que está la renta y mis ingresos son muy bajos, no califico para un apartamento de precio completo.
So I do appreciate for giving me the opportunity to live there, definitely grateful for that. However, I do beg of you to help us find a spa, a place to live, because I have even searched for regular places where they're not, not affordable housing, and the rent is twice the, the amount that I'm paying at the moment, and my income is not sufficient to afford one of these places.
Y pues es todo lo que tengo que decir, muchas gracias.
And that's all, I had to say thank you. Gracias.
Thank you for coming, Guadalupe. Next up is Giovanni, followed by Peola.
Council members, mayor, my name is Giovanni Olondes. I have been a resident of Villa Serena for the past ten years in February. I am a single father of four, and we moved into Villa Serena ten years ago due to a issue that we had with moving into a three-bedroom with my parents into a different National Court apartment or location. Ever since then, when we were given the apartment, we were essentially told to sign the, uh, sign the papers and to sign the waiver to essentially give up our rights or we would not have anywhere to live. We were only given fifteen days to move out of my parents' place because the place that we were at was small for a family of six at the time. Now, when we had that meeting in December, I did ask quite a few questions. I asked what kind of help will we be receiving, is everyone gonna be receiving just a paper with the list, and is that all you're gonna be giving folks? We were told no. We were told that we were gonna be giving actual help, we're gonna be looking at all the housing options such as all the things everybody else had been mentioning. Now, when I had the meeting, I had my meeting right after work. I actually stayed at work because I don't get off until late. In that meeting, I was essentially giving my paper saying, hey, you sign this paper, you have no rights, we'll give you five thousand dollars as long as you find somewhere else to live first and as long as you're out by May first. Now, that doesn't sound to me like we were actually given a choice, let alone any options. Now, that irritated me. That got me into talking to other folks to figure out, hey, what is everybody else going through? Now, hearing concerned folks letting me know that, hey, some of these contracts don't seem right. I have the original papers, why is it dated completely different from what I have right here? Why is this paper dated a year before we actually moved in? It's not the first time I've had issues with management. As some other folks have mentioned, we've had several managers, not just one, not two. If I remember correctly, I think we've had about four or five. Each manager was different, each manager gave us a different runaround. I've had my own issues with National Court themselves, to the point where I was threatened to essentially get kicked out of the apartments once. That was not a fun moment at the time, but I escalated my, my situation to the top and was able to get that resolved. Now, I'm speaking here in front of everybody because I know a lot of the folks in the apartments don't really speak English. A lot of the folks speak Spanish, and I feel that it's unfair that I feel that everybody's being taken advantage of, and that's not okay. A lot of folks are not able to actually afford twenty-five hundred for a single bedroom, thirty-six hundred for a three-bedroom. So I would like to at least propose that they, the National Court at least pause to give folks enough time to actually move out, as these wait times, they have been at least a year to move into other apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Peola, followed by our final speaker, which is Georgina.
Ay, estoy un poquito nerviosa. Ah, mi nombre es Paola Conde y pues realmente yo estoy muy agradecida porque pude tener la oportunidad, aunque sea un poco de tiempo de pagar un poco de renta.
Good evening, my name is Paola Conde, and I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity to move, to live at Villa Serena and allow me to pay a more affordable amount for rent.
Estuve en la lista de espera por más de siete años, este, y finalmente pues cuando se me habló pues realmente yo estuve muy contenta.
So I was on the waiting list for roughly seven years, and when I finally got the call, I was extremely happy.
El proceso duró como tres meses y la cosa rara fue que en ningún momento se me informó de, de este proyecto hasta el último día que nos, que yo firmé el contrato.
So the process took about three months, and I was not informed about what was going on in regards to the, the issue with the building until like the final date of me signing the paperwork.
Bueno, y últimamente, la última cosa también es de que yo firmé los papeles con Core Management, este, para, para moverme y se me ofrecieron los cinco mil dólares que yo firmé, este, pero pues, y yo estuve contenta por eso, pero la cosa rara es de que se contradicen muchísimo.
So when I signed the waiver as well, they offered me the five thousand, I was extremely happy as well, I mean, I was content with that, but then I just started noticing that they're contradicting themselves often.
Sí, ellos se contradicen mucho con la información de que uno va a poder encontrar otros apartamentos y que la Ciudad de San Marcos, este, ya les mandó una carta a los otros apartamentos para que acepten, para que uno pueda brincar la lista de espera. Y pero cuando uno habla los apartamentos, eso no es verdad, uno...
So one of the ways they contradict themselves is that they give you the information saying that it'll be easy, the relocation process is gonna be easy. They, they have said that a notification has been sent by the city of San Marcos or the other places to be able to get a unit, but that's not true.
Sí, pues se contradice demasiado de que ellos pueden, ay, ya me rubroqué, de que National Court dice que sí podemos ir a, a movernos, como toda la gente ya ha dicho pues, de que sí vamos a poder encontrar apartamentos, pero realmente cuando vamos a buscarlos no, no hay nada, no hay apartamentos disponibles.
Yeah, so again, you know, that's the way that they contradict themselves, saying that we are all gonna be able to find a, a unit if we go to all these locations that were given to us, but once we show up to these locations, that's not what's going on.
Y pues sí, lo mío único temor es de que pues otra vez volver a estar en la lista de espera en otros apartamentos por otros cinco años más, otra vez, y otra vez volver a rentar cuartos con mis dos hijos.
Yeah, and so I'm very worried that I would have to get back on the list and have another wait time of five years or move in and rent a one-bedroom with another family with my two kids.
Y pues eso era todo, nada más quería que pues se pusieran de acuerdo nada más con la información que ellos dan y que la Ciudad de San Marcos da también a la gente.
So, that's pretty much it, that's all I wanted to say, but I also wanted to say that hopefully that you guys can actually say the same thing, what Core is saying and what the city of San Marcos is also saying.
Eso ayudaría mucho a la comunidad.
And that would help the community a lot.
Thank you, Peola, thank you for coming. Next up is Georgina. Could you ask Peola not to leave too? I don't know if she's gonna leave, I think she's probably not gonna.
Y que no se vaya Paula, que no se vaya, dice que la espere.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Georgina Najera, vivo aquí en San Marcos, soy líder comunitario de Universidad Popular. Estoy, no soy inquilino de Villa Serena, pero estoy aquí para apoyar. He estado escuchando lo que han estado hablando los miembros de mi comunidad, para mí no es nuevo. Todos estos abusos a los derechos de los inquilinos son presentes, siempre han estado, no se les ha dado atención. Los entiendo, que se sientan con miedo.
Can you translate for us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, good evening, my name is Georgina Najera. I am from the Universidad Popular. I am not a resident from Villa Serena, I'm here to, to help and support. The rights of the tenants, it seems like it's nothing new, they've always not been looked at, it's very present, and I understand that they're living in fear.
Entiendo que se sientan con miedo, estas son las preocupaciones que hemos estado escuchando durante este tiempo, hemos estado monitoreando esto, todo este tipo de abusos. Las agencias que contratan para darle procedimiento a este tipo de desalojos son intimidantes, los representantes de esas agencias, te hablan con intimidad, para intimidarte.
So I understand that they live in fear, and I'm worried because it seems like this is the same thing that I've been hearing and we've been paying attention. Some of the agencies that get hired for this remodeling and to, when they reach out to them, they talk with a tone to intimidate the community.
Si yo lo digo que sí es intimidante todo esto, este proceso que pasa cada inquilino en este tipo de desalojos, es porque yo lo viví en el 2020.
So I lived this intimidating process back in twenty, in twenty twenty.
En plena pandemia, nos quisieron hacer lo mismo que a ellos, nos quisieron desalojar en poco tiempo, cambiaban de decisiones, no respetaban el acuerdo que se había firmado.
So they would do the same to us, and during COVID, during the pandemic, they would do the same as they're doing at Villa Serena, they would not keep their word, or they would not, oh my god, they wouldn't go by the, by the, by the contract, they would break the contracts.
Se reciben amenazas si se reciben amenazas.
Do, do we get threats? We do get threats.
Eso deberían poner atención todos ustedes, todo lo que sucede aquí en la Ciudad de San Marcos cuando se hace ese tipo de desalojos.
That's what you guys should pay attention to. The city of San Marcos should pay attention to this, especially when this kind of relocating process happens.
A que se hagan ese tipo de desalojos como marca la ley, deben de darle seguimiento ustedes, porque yo vine aquí también a presentar ese tipo de problemas que estábamos pasando nosotros, mis vecinos y yo, pero yo me aseguré que el último inquilino sí lo reubicaran. ¿Por qué? Porque es un derecho que tienen los, todos los inquilinos. ¿Nos quieren callar nuestra libertad de expresión? No, no lo podemos permitir que nos callen, que nos intimiden.
Yeah, so I went through this, and then this should be done as the law states, every tenant should have the right to get relocated. You wanna shut us down? You wanna intimidate us? No, that's not gonna happen.
Las personas que yo acabo de escuchar que tienen miedo, es lógico que tienen miedo. Yo tuve que hacer un reporte a la policía porque me aflojaron mi llanta de mi carro, no sé con qué intención, no puedo acusar a nadie, pero tuve que hacer un reporte a la policía. La misma policía me dijo, esto no es un robo, este es un atentado. No sé, no puedo acusar porque no tengo pruebas, pero fue en ese tiempo que yo quise hablar, me quisieron silenciar, no les conviene que uno hable, y pude entender, eso es lo que ustedes deben de poner atención cada vez que aprueban un desalojo. No les conviene que uno hable y puedo entender, eso es lo que ustedes deben de poner atención cada vez que aprueban un desalojo. Y es muy importante también ver que te piden tres veces de lo que ganas.
So yeah, so fear, of course I understand they live in fear and they should fear. I went through it, I even represented myself here when this was happening in the premises that I used to live. And threats were made. One time I woke up to my car tire being flat. When I called the cop, the police to be, to make a report, they said this was not just an incident, this was more of a direct attack. And the thing is, if people search other places to live, the rent is three times as much.
Tres meses de renta debes de tener para calificar a dónde ir. Eso ustedes no se han puesto a pensar, que ese es un problema ahorita. Aparte de que no hay viviendas, no hay suficiente viviendas para reubicar, por eso no están haciendo caso. Se están retractando a los acuerdos que hacen con los inquilinos y eso deben de darse cuenta de lo que está sucediendo. Más bien esto no es nuevo, sabemos que esto está sucediendo, pero nadie quiere, nadie quiere escuchar, nadie quiere ver. Nosotros como líderes comunitarios ahí estamos, estamos escuchando las necesidades y preocupaciones de cada miembro de nuestra comunidad. Por eso estoy aquí para decirles que nosotros estamos monitoreando todo eso, lo cual ustedes no ponen atención de lo que está sucediendo aquí en la Ciudad de San Marcos. Aquí no hay pobreza, por supuesto que hay pobreza, hay bajos recursos, sí hay bajos recursos.
Okay, we need him to translate, sorry.
No, not a problem. So, three times, three times the amount of the rent, that's what they require as a deposit. And the problem is there's no places to move in as well. That's why a lot of these events are core retracting of their contracts with people. See, nobody hears, nobody listens, but we as leaders of the community, we are here, we monitor. That there's no poverty in San Marcos, of course there is.
Va a crecer las personas.
Sorry, I was actually gonna answer one thing, I'm gonna have him translate. There's actually a new law as of January 1st, I believe it is, that you can only charge one month rent, so for a security deposit. So charging three months of rent can no longer happen by California law, I just wanted to mention that to you.
Quería contestar algo que usted dijo, después de enero, primero de enero de este año, hay una ley en California que en ningún lugar puede cobrarle más de un mes de renta de depósito.
So if someone's trying to charge you that, they are not following the state law, just so you know.
Si alguien les pide a ustedes más de un mes de renta, eso no es cierto, no pueden cobrarle más de un mes de renta si se van a otro lugar. Quiero que sepan, es una ley en California.
Pues qué bueno, qué bueno porque eso es lo que está afectando a las familias de bajos recursos, porque yo lo viví. Tres meses de renta me pidieron para yo poder calificar para una vivienda de dos recámaras.
That's good, that's good, because that's what's affecting a lot of these low-income families. I had to go through it myself, they asked me three times the amount of rent that I had to pay in order for me to move into a two-bedroom.
That's illegal and that is not, that is against the law.
Eso es ilegal, es contra la ley.
Pues sí, pero como les digo, tienen que poner atención en eso, porque ese es el abuso del inquilino, que es al derecho al inquilino, la tranquilidad y que puedan pagar una vivienda.
That's the abuse that happens with the tenants, you know, and what they deserve is tranquility and be able to afford paying for the rent.
Y si sigue así, estoy casi segura que va a haber mucho, va a crecer el número de personas en condición de calle.
Yeah, and if this keeps going, I'm sure the homelessness numbers are gonna increase here in San Marcos.
Y yo creo que hay que trabajar en eso, gracias.
Thank you.
And I feel like we need to work on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I have...
I'm sorry, I was not on the list to speak, can I have a couple words?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, I was going to ask someone where you came from, because I wasn't even honestly certain.
I apologize.
So you're not here on behalf of the city?
No.
Okay, well, I didn't know, I am so sorry, why don't...
But that'll be $2.50. I can't.
There's a piece of candy in the back I could share with you.
I'll take that.
Go ahead and introduce yourself please and then go ahead and use the microphone, you've got five minutes, yes, thank you. You know what, I think it's better because we have like it all videotaped, it would actually work out better, so you could refer back to it too.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
So my name is Fortino Lopez, I'm a tenant at Villa Serena, I've been a tenant since 2019 and I would like to say, my experience there has been extremely, extremely awesome. Jennifer, who has been the manager ever since, has always attended to my needs, I never had an issue and I'm a single father of two young boys. Living there has facilitated my life so much, I never had my own space and I cannot tell you how happy I was when I had my own place. It also facilitated me so that I can attend school, I am currently working to do my nursing licenses. However, this is kinda putting a little roadblock on my school as well as lifestyle. I was aware of what was happening with the premises, luckily I do understand and speak English, so I knew that legality is in a way and what they're giving me, I'm content with, I'm okay with, I accept my fate. But I do understand that a lot of these people here are going through a lot of struggles and their situation is a lot more difficult than mine. I have a very extended family, so I can call somebody, hey, can you put me in the kitchen for like a few years? And I can't do that, but a lot of people can't and as you noticed, there's a lot of single parents here. I understand that myself, so I'm not here complaining. I just hope that you guys do listen to these people, including me, if one day, once the remodeling is done, if I get the opportunity again, I would be extremely happy again. But if not, you know, I will continue moving forward. And thank you, Core, thank you Jennifer, for always being awesome, at least in my experience, okay, thank you guys.
Translating a little bit longer? Just a little bit longer?
Just yours or mine?
Well, maybe just mine, if you don't mind, but maybe you would wanna translate what you said also.
Okay.
So lo que yo dije es de que mi experiencia con los apartamentos de Villa Serena para mí fue espectacular. Jennifer fue para mí una manager muy buena, desde que yo empecé ahí ella siempre atendía mis necesidades y cuando mis niños se portaban mal también yo asumía responsabilidad. Yo nunca dije que mis niños caminaban al lado de Dios y que eran unos santitos, pero sí. Gracias a Dios con la oportunidad que Core me dio, yo pude tener mi propio espacio, algo que nunca tenía yo y ahorita estoy atendiendo la escuela para hacer mi licenciatura de enfermero. Esto sí va a poner un poquito de dificultad en mi vida para obtener mi meta, pero no me voy a dar por vencido, ojalá y si al rato los construyen, if I get a call, si me llaman, está bien y si no pues yo pienso que también voy a seguir moviéndome para adelante. Yo entiendo que no todas las situaciones de todos es la misma y yo lo que le digo a ellos, yo no me estoy quejando, yo a contrario estoy dando gracias, pero sé que muchos de ustedes no están en la misma situación que yo. Yo tengo una familia muy grande, yo puedo llamar y hasta en la cocina me pueden meter a vivir un rato, ¿verdad? Pero yo entiendo que ustedes no, muchos de ustedes no y yo le pido a ellos que le escuchen a ustedes y ojalá los puedan ayudar, gracias.
Am I saying it right, Fortino?
Fortino.
Fortino, Fortino. When you're done, not right this second, but when, could you also fill out a speaker slip? Because we like to have that online filed, that'd be great. Okay, and so I have just a few observations and hopefully I can read my notes because they are clearly very messy. Anyway, I'd like to make a few observations and then I'll have staff go through, you know, some of the discussion here. So first of all, you know, we as a city council, we don't understand all of the, I mean, we've heard a lot tonight, but we don't understand all of the fine details of all of the unique needs here.
So hice algunas observaciones y quiero decirles que nosotros, aunque no entendemos todos los detalles de lo que pasó con ustedes... Okay, repeat the last part.
We don't really know what their unique needs are, but they are important and I wanted to add that part in.
Aunque no sabemos todos los detalles de todas sus situaciones, quiero que sepan que todos para nosotros son importantes.
And what I've observed this evening is we have people asking for help.
Lo que observé hoy es de que hay gente que está pidiendo ayuda...
And that they're worried about safety.
Y que tienen miedo con su seguridad.
They feel there's a short timeframe.
Que tienen muy poco tiempo para moverse.
Fear of the unknown.
Miedo a lo que todavía no es, al futuro.
Worried about their families.
Preocupados por su familia.
And their kids having to switch schools.
Y sus niños tienen que moverse de escuelas.
And we had twenty-three speakers, I think, or actually I think twenty-four, including you, I think is what we ended up with. And I think that there's been a lot of confusion because there's not a clear outline of responsibilities provided with the paperwork.
Okay, so parece que hay bastante confusión porque no hay...
That there is not a clear outline of responsibilities provided when they're given their paperwork.
Y que no hay claridad en los papeles que les están dando, que lo están probando con las responsabilidades que ellos están asumiendo.
And it seems to be that there needs to be a little hand-holding and I don't know how you translate that.
Y parece que necesitamos como agarrarnos de la mano, by the tenants or by Core?
No, by, 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 yes, everyone holding hands a little bit to get you through the process because it is complicated.
Okay, parece que necesitamos agarrar de la mano uno al otro y apoyarnos para poder hacer este proceso más fácil.
And true coordination.
Y coordinación.
And anyway, I know that I can speak for the entire council, we really do appreciate some of the struggles that people have shared with us and we do understand that, you know, when you, and you know, I came, my parents got divorced when I was pretty young, so I was from a single-parent household.
Okay, so creo que yo hablo por todos los miembros del consulado, de que yo entiendo cuando ustedes dicen que... Porque yo también vengo de una familia donde mis padres se separaron cuando yo era muy joven, so también vengo de una familia de padres solteros.
And there's also the issue, the other side is, we have the issue of the funding to rebuild Villa Serena so that there is good, safe housing.
Y también tenemos el otro caso de que también estamos tratando de dar los fondos para reconstruir Villa Serena.
And timing on the funding and, you know, that's like a pretty tight timeframe once the tax, that's kind of complicated. It's a complicated process.
Es un proceso un poco complicado porque también el tiempo de que tienen que aprobar los fondos es muy corto, es un poco complicado, pero sí.
And then I do have a couple of questions that I would like to have cleared up. One is going to be of National Corps and that is, the first phase of Villa Serena, when that happened, were there discussions that happened with the residents of Phase Two and what the future would be with the tear-down? So not right this second, but I'd like that addressed.
So tengo unas preguntas que va a ser para Core, cuando pasó la primera fase del 340, ¿hubo pláticas con el lado del 339?
And some clarity on the agreements, whether they were in English, Spanish, or both?
Y claridad en si es que estaba en español o en inglés o en los dos.
And then the discussing about the waivers, what was the result of why there were waivers provided? Was it due to rent, was it due to something else? And if we could please have that explained in detail, that would be good.
Y también los waivers que les dieron para firmar fue porque por problemas con la renta o porque también necesitamos claridad en eso.
And then also explaining why they continue to have folks move in or, you know, people move into the vacant units.
Y también saber por qué siguen dejando que la gente siga moviéndose a las unidades que estaban vacantes.
And then, before we have discussion up here amongst ourselves, I would like to have Sylvia, our affordable housing specialist, discuss about what the city's role is in all of this and maybe you could explain, oh wait, I actually have a list for you too, sorry. Yeah, what is the relocation process? And then also make sure in that if you discuss the priority list and how that works, because that was actually the first time that I had heard about that. So, and then also the timing of when waivers are supposed to be signed, because I'm confused about those things. So, anyway, Sylvia, I think you're on, thank you.
Good evening, so the waivers were provided by National Corps to tenants.
So I'm sorry to do this, but it seems to me that if we're not gonna have interpretation for this very important part, then I'm not sure...
I was actually going to ask her if she speaks Spanish, because I'm not aware and I thought maybe she would actually say it in Spanish, if she does.
I can, but I'd prefer to have, just so I can think about each answer, I wanna focus on each answer.
Well, I do, I too want it to be translated, so yes, then yes, we, sorry, sorry. I'll give you two candy bars, okay?
There, deal.
The waivers were provided by National Corps to tenants, what our understanding is, upon move-in. And the waivers are required by law to inform tenants that they are, by signing, waiving their rights for relocation benefits. That is our understanding.
So Sylvia is like, so she is in charge of the affordable housing relocation?
No, not that, no, we don't, we're not in charge of the relocation, we're in charge of making sure that the law is followed, correct? And I do want you to talk a little bit about that, you know, what our role is.
And Fortino, just so that the audience knows, Sylvia is in charge of our affordable housing program, so she's the contact when residents are reaching out and wanting information on affordable housing.
So Sylvia es la que se encarga del programa de affordable housing de aquí en San Marcos y ella es la que contactan cuando están firmando para ese tipo de programas. Dice que estos waivers se dieron para todos cuando firmaron su contrato. Como va la ley, estos son mandatorios cuando se mueven los reteros a las unidades, eso se tenía que haberse les dado desde el principio.
And then you had a question about the city's role and the process.
Yes, correct.
So a lot of people asked about the vacancy and the waitlist for the affordable properties in San Marcos and we have informed all properties that are our affordable development partners and our inclusionary housing partners via a letter. I'll let you translate.
Y mucha gente pregunta sobre la lista de espera y toda esta información se le ha dado a las locaciones donde estas unidades están disponibles vía email, so por correo electrónico se les manda.
Sorry, correction, via carta, so we did a letter, we mailed a letter.
O por una carta.
But we will, so hearing all of your concerns, we will reach out to every development via phone call and via meetings and then what we'll also do is provide every resident with a custom letter with your name, your information and my information and our city manager's information to ensure that they all understand you should be given priority on the waitlist.
Okay, so dice que se les va a volver a contactar a todas estas locaciones por teléfono o juntas y se les va a mandar una carta a todos ustedes individualmente, que es perteneciente a cada individuo, para que les den prioridad a todos, porque todos deberían de darle prioridad a los que estamos siendo desalojados de esas unidades.
This should help with some vacancies, but I will, just to be very clear and transparent, there are significant waitlists and often at properties there are maybe three to five vacancies per year, so it is still a limited list.
Okay, so esto puede ayudar con algunas unidades que estén vacantes, pero para ser transparentes con ustedes también, puede que haya esperas y puede que, porque hay como de tres a cinco unidades que se vuelven vacantes sobre todo el año, so tengan en mente de que puede que también tengan que esperar.
What we will also do is reach out to the school district, to the county of San Diego, and our neighboring cities to ask for the same assistance in assisting you guys to get on priority waitlist.
Okay, y también vamos a contactar a las escuelas y a los condados para que ayuden también con esto, para ver si pueden ayudarles con esta situación que estamos pasando.
So I would just like to talk a little bit about the relocation process, or have you talk a little bit about the relocation process. When we have a developer that comes forward, says, "Okay, we received our funding. We now are going to start the process." What is the city's role in how that moves forward? What is our job and what is the developer's job?
The developer
Oh, I think you should translate that. That's a pretty important question.
So lo que también queremos saber es cuál es el rol de nosotros como la ciudad, y también de los que cuando ya se aprueba los fondos para reconstruir esto, ¿cuál es el rol que juega la ciudad?
The city and then the developer that's going to be doing it, and then also what does the city actually control in that process?
Okay, para saber qué es lo que controla la ciudad y qué es lo que controla la compañía que va a hacer la remodelación de las unidades. Quieren saber cuál es el rol.
So the developer is required to create a relocation plan and is required to submit this plan to the city, but also to the state and to the county for approval prior to receiving any funding. And those steps were taken.
Okay, so la compañía que va a remodelar estas unidades es responsable de hacer un plan de reubicación, y entonces ellos se lo tienen que mandar a la ciudad de San Marcos, y estos, estos pasos sí fueron hechos para este plan.
To the county and state as well.
Okay, so también se lo mandaron al condado y también al estado, so estos sí hicieron eso.
Okay, and as far as what we have control over, who is the governing body when things aren't, like if there is a complaint, who is in charge of that? I don't know, maybe, well, if there's a complaint filed, who then is the authority that will make sure that the process is being followed?
It's according to the relocation plan, and there is a relocation appeals board, so there's an administrative process to go through, generally speaking.
Okay, I just wasn't actually sure if it's the city, or if it's the county, or if it's the actual state, but I guess it's an outside third party, correct?
We've done relocation appeals board hearings in-house.
Okay, all right, maybe you could explain that, that there is a process.
When there's a complaint?
Yeah, maybe Helen could explain it again, and then you could translate exactly what she says.
So the city is the one that's
Well, let Helen respond to that, if you don't mind.
There should be a process. I don't know the relocation plan for this area. My apologies, but I have not, I have not recently or even ever probably seen this relocation plan. Generally speaking, relocation plans have appeals periods and mechanisms built in. So we would abide by whatever the plan calls for, right?
So cuando hay una apelación, cuando los están relocando, hay un proceso que tiene que pasar, entonces ella no sabe los, todo lo del plan de reubicación que Corps hizo, pero sí hay un proceso que se tiene que seguir cuando hay una apelación, que se tiene que sumetir una apelación, en caso de que alguien de ustedes quiera sumetir una.
Okay, so now, oops, sorry. Because I think we had, the interpretation wasn't so, and I think this is very critical. As a city, we do have a plan, and we know what that plan is, and it's available to anybody that wants to see it.
Okay.
The only reason why I said that was because she said she was not aware of the plan.
No, she just doesn't know the specific details off the top of her head.
I did not say that because I've not seen the plan, and I don't want to make a misrepresentation of what the plan contains.
Yeah, to a project.
But can I, but I do want to make sure that all our residents are aware that there is a plan, and it's available to anybody who wants to see it or needs to see it.
So ellas quieren darles a saber que sí hay un plan de reubicación que está disponible para cualquier individuo que quiera mirarlo o que quiere una copia, se los pueden dar.
Okay, now I think we will have National Corps come up and
Is it going to be in English and Spanish, the relocation plan?
That's probably a question for John, yes. I think he said everything is in English and Spanish. That's what I was told. Okay, so Mr. Seymour, if you could come up and maybe address all of the questions that were presented this evening. And there was, there was a lot, and, you know, can you translate one more thing? Thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking to us. Your comments and your questions are very important to us.
Y gracias a todos por venir y hablar con nosotros. Todas sus preguntas y comentarios son muy importantes para nosotros.
Thank you, okay. Whoever, whoever you want to translate, as long as it's translated, I'm good.
This gentleman is doing a great job.
I think he's doing a great job. Now he's going to get three candy bars. They are small ones. I'm so sorry about that. Maybe I'll give you ten. Thank you.
Mayor, I just, we just want to say on behalf of National Corps, we hear the residents. We're going to go back and we'll meet with every single resident, take as much time. If we can, we'll extend the time to help residents find alternative housing. I'm not going to lie to you, it's hard out there right now, and doing development and especially redevelopment of Villas Serena to create more units, to create 50% two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms for larger families, we're doing the best we can. On the relocation rights waiver, it's required by law, and what it basically says is that if you choose to rent in a
Make smaller pieces.
Oh, I'm sorry. So let's go back and just say
I'm barely keeping up with you going
The goal of what we're doing is to create more housing, more bedrooms.
So, sí, disculpen, es que estaba hablando de más.
Okay, I'm, 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 sorry, I, we need to follow some procedures because we can't have people speaking from the audience. So you did kind of hear what she had to say. There's a lot that's been said. I really hope that you've written down all of the questions. I think you have. I saw you scribbling away over there. So how about this? How about we go through this? And if we have other questions that we need to, that we need to feel addressed, we want to hear your voice, but I just can't have you speaking out during, if you don't mind. I really appreciate it. Try to keep us, so everything's on the record. We have everything perfectly right the way that we're supposed to. I like to follow the rules, so, yes, thank you. And if you, do you want to, did you forget, or would you rather, okay, all right, good. I just want to make sure we're all good.
So de parte de Corps quiero decirles que si escuchamos todos sus comentarios y todo lo que están diciendo, quiero que decirles que vamos a volver a hacer, a juntarnos con cada uno de ustedes, y si es necesario extender el tiempo para que ustedes busquen encontrar un lugar, pues entonces tendremos que hacer eso. No voy a mentirles, fue que es demasiado difícil para encontrar un lugar donde moverse. En sí, hasta para reconstruir es difícil, dijo. Entonces queremos, nuestra meta es construir más unidades para familias más grandes de dos o tres recámaras.
Thank you.
And just if I could speak really quick, just to reiterate, my position in National Corps is the relocation manager, and for this role, I am the relocation agent. And so I know this is a difficult situation, but my job is to become the liaison between the city, development, and the residents to speak on behalf, oh, sorry.
Okay, no, I was just going to say, we need a little translation here.
So Chris dice que él es el agente que va a estar ayudándonos con esto de la reubicación, so he would be the point of contact. Okay, so él es el que va a ser su punto de contacto para este proceso.
And I am the liaison, the liaison that speaks on, between the representative, between the city, the development company, and the residents.
Okay, y también él es la persona que él se comunica con la ciudad, con la compañía que va a renovar los, las unidades, y con los residentes.
And you, National Corps is unique. We have, you know, we are the developer property management and the relocation department, which I think very few developers even have the relocation department. But my job is solely is to that, is to provide the information to the residents, what they're entitled to, and then just to follow relocation law. And I know it seems like me being the direct contact, I may be the bad person, but it's just solely, and so they understand it is just my job.
Okay, y mi trabajo es proveerles la información para los que tienen los beneficios o lo que sea. Yo sé que me hace ver como la persona mala, pero en realidad ese es mi trabajo. Yo soy el que tengo que comunicarle toda esta información.
I'm good.
All right, were you going to continue, Mr. Seymour?
I'll just also say that it was mentioned that there's a fear of becoming homeless as a result of this process, and that's not going to happen. National Corps will not. Just like we did on the first phase, let anyone become homeless. We'll go to hotels, motels, we'll pay for that, we'll make sure it gets done, just like we did on the first phase.
So there was some discussion about some folks being given just $5,000, for instance. So when you, so with that statement, could you explain that a little bit further?
Yes, we both were
Yes, so the residents during the relocation interview, they were notified if they were entitled to relocation benefits or they were ineligible for relocation benefits. And the notice is, it is another separate notice of eligibility. The first two paragraphs solely states that they signed the waiver and forfeited the relocation benefits, and so that concluded, resulted that they were ineligible for benefits. It also stated that when the project is complete, they will have the right to return. And I explained to them the process that 120 days prior to the project be completing, so we fall underneath that window. We will call them and ask them if they want to return, and then we will go ahead and set up interviews with the property management staff to get their applications in. It also stated that, oh, sorry, oh, sorry.
Thanks. He's trying to read my notes.
John.
So John dice que yo sé que hay muchas preocupaciones de que se queden sin vivienda. Muchos de ustedes dijo que esto no va a pasar. Esto no sucedió cuando se hizo la reconstrucción del 340, y si tenemos que extendernos para contactar hoteles o otras unidades, eso vamos a hacer. Entonces la mayor dijo, la mayor doma dijo que sí, con eso que él acaba de decir, porque nomás les ofrecieron 5,000 dólares a la mayoría, dijo pues que entonces van a mirar eso.
Remind me what you said. That the notice did say if they were ineligible for relocation benefits. They were ineligible for relocation benefits, but it also stated on there that they would have the right to return once the project is complete.
Y Chris dice que en los waivers que firmaron, sí dice que algunos firmaron que no iban a ser
Just to clarify, it's their notice of eligibility, that if they did state that they were ineligible for benefits, did hold that clause that they were able to have the right to return.
So dice que sí cuando firmaron que sí estaban negando sus beneficios, su elegibilidad para tener los beneficios, pero también en ese párrafo, o en el siguiente párrafo, dice que pueden, también son elegibles para volver a las unidades ya que se termine la construcción.
The notice also stated they would have to be out by May 1st of 2024, because that would conclude the 120 days when the first initial notice was issued.
Y también en la nota dice que tenían que desalojar para el primero de mayo, porque en ese tiempo se cumplen los 120 días de cuando la primera vez se les dio la notificación.
And the notice also stated that it wasn't a benefit or it wasn't a settlement agreement. So nowhere in the notice did it say it was an agreement or a settlement, but it did state they were ineligible for benefits, but the National Corps would be providing $5,000 to every resident and their full security deposit on possession of keys. And it was clarified that it wasn't benefits, so they don't get confused that they are receiving relocation benefits.
Okay, so dice que también eso, en la nota no dice que es un beneficio que se les está dando. Es simplemente son 5,000 dólares que se les está dando, y también se les va a regresar su depósito para que no se confundan de que son beneficios los que se les están dando.
And then the final, second page of that was, it wasn't a required signature, but we did ask them if they would like to sign it. Some did refuse, but all it states is, as me being the relocation agency on behalf of the displacing agency, that I did provide them this information to them. The second page was a signature, that it wasn't mandatory, it was voluntary, it was, you know, yes, that they could sign it. But all it states is that me on behalf of the displacing agency gave them the information and did my job.
So dice que en la segunda, en la final parte de la segunda página, la firma que se les pidió no era para, no era mandatoria, sino simplemente era notificando de que ustedes se les había dado la información que crees que tenía que darles, pero que no era mandatoria esa firma.
And this notice was also given a copy in Spanish as well.
Y que esta, y que esta copia también se les dio en español.
Okay, so I have a clarifying question that I'm not sure who's going to answer. This, this letter, there was some discussion about having different dates on things. And so are we, do we keep those on file, or are those all handled? Because, you know, kind of back to who does what, like I'm not clear on that. So you keep all of those onsite at, is it onsite?
That is correct. It is onsite.
Okay, so all of the things where there have been, you know, people have said, okay, it has one date, but that's not my signature, I didn't How do we get this cleared up? Like, how do we, how do we help find some clarity on that? Because I just am a little confused about that. And I don't know if folks have them at home, and then they could bring in their copy, like I don't, I don't know. How do we figure that out?
So in their interview, they were provided with copies of their waiver that they signed. And so we took those out of their file, made copies for ourselves as a secondary for our relocation file, and then provided them a copy of their waiver.
And I'm so sorry to interrupt. Could we perhaps translate the question, and then we'll give you another shot at the answer. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm kind of tired, so I'm sorry. And we're going to have to take a restroom break, and then I think the council will, you know, reconvene, maybe after five minutes, just so everyone could run to the restroom, grab a water or whatever. So anyway, so yes, please.
La mayor doma pregunta de que, okay, entonces cómo es de que muchos papeles están saliendo con diferentes fechas y diferentes iniciales, diferentes firmas. Cómo vamos a clarificar eso? Preguntó si la ciudad tiene copias de esos o no. Chris respondió que no, que esos papeles están con ellos, ellos los tienen. So eso es lo que quieren mirar de cómo van a verificar de que eso, porque la gente está teniendo diferentes fechas y diferentes firmas que muchos de ustedes no firmaron, pero tienen sus iniciales.
Oh, could you, could you explain what we're going to do? We're going to hear from them, we're going to have questions. And then if we have more questions that need to be addressed, we just can't have people speaking from the audience?
Okay, dice que ellos le van a preguntar preguntas a ellos, y ellos van a contestar, que por favor traten de no hablar de la audiencia, al menos que se requiera. Disculpen.
Okay, so all of the questions that we asked, I don't know if you addressed them all, did you? All of the questions that you
Most of them, if I could.
You were supposed to be writing these down. I don't know, okay. So you know what? We'll go ahead and we'll start asking questions from the council, so you two just stay there, and we need you to please help. I'll go in, I'll see how much candy I can bring up for you. I don't know what staff can scrounge up, but, okay. So yes, go ahead, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I have just a couple of clarifications. I'm glad you mentioned that you're going to take care of this. I know, I think we were in a similar situation a few years ago. I know, I think we were in a similar situation a few years ago with you standing up there. And I believe before you demolished the building, you had satisfied and made sure everybody got to an appropriate place.
We did.
So estoy muy contenta de que hayas dicho que vas a mirar en eso de lo que están preguntando. Me da, tengo gusto de que cuando, con las otras unidades, antes de que todos se movieran, tú te aseguraste de que todos tenían un lugar donde irse.
And then you made a comment, I just want to clarify this. I have lots of notes here, too. You made a comment that you can delay slightly if needed to make sure everybody is taking.
Que también podías este, demorar un poco el tiempo si es que se requiere, para que cuando la gente necesite moverse. Y John contestó de que sí, tenemos unas dos o tres semanas que podemos agregar.
And then also just to clarify, you said everybody will get a minimum of 5,000, but there could be some that get considerably more.
Correct.
Okay, y también dijiste que todos van a recibir el mínimo de cinco mil, pero hay otros que pueden recibir una cantidad considerable más. John contestó que sí.
Deputy Mayor, those, it would be 5,000 to all residents. Those that would get more would be entitled to their relocation benefits. And those residents have been notified of, that they all have those benefits as well.
Okay. And then can you explain, because we weren't certain of the answer, about the relocation plan with the appeals? You probably know, if there is an appeal of some kind, who do they go to? Do they go to you, and then you escalate it, or?
One of the last pages, I don't know, do you want to translate that first?
Sí, so la pregunta, hubo una pregunta sobre el plan de relocation, y que si alguien quiere apelar, a quién van a notificar.
So on the relocation plan, I believe it's one of the last pages, there's actually of the residents who want to file an appeal, that's the process and the address and everywhere where that may contact, it would vary depending on the city or the relocation plan, but I'm always more than welcome, as you know, that is a public document for the residents to view.
Okay, is that San Diego County or the state, or where is that?
I would have to look at that relocation plan.
Okay.
Okay, so si, si alguien quiere someter una apelación, en la última página, ahí está la información donde pueden este, sumetir su apelación. Le preguntó la deputy si es con el condado, con la ciudad. Chris contestó de que él tiene que mirar al plan para poder contestar esa pregunta.
I'd like to jump in for just one second. The reason that there's no copy of the relocation plan here this evening, if you could.
Sí, solo más quiero decirles que la razón porque no tenemos una copia del plan de relocation.
Is because tonight our agenda item is about approving an amended developer loan agreement with National Corps.
Es porque, la razón de esta junta era para mirar el este, si se aprueba o no el préstamo para la construcción de Concor.
And then another question I have is, there seemed to be some confusion about English documents versus Spanish documents. Go ahead.
So también quiero saber porque parece que hay confusión con los documentos que están en español y en inglés.
So my question to you is, you said earlier you're gonna meet with every resident again. Can you make sure when you meet with them that you have both available?
Y mi pregunta es, tú dijiste que te vas a volver a contactar con todo, con cada uno de los residentes otra vez. Te puedes asegurar de que esos, la información esté en los dos, en español y en inglés?
I just want to clarify, and I don't recall saying that I was gonna meet with every resident again, but we do have that open communication line with the resident, and more than welcome to provide any of those, those documents in Spanish again if they misplaced them, or for some reason they don't get them, no problem at all.
Okay.
Okay, solo más quiero corregir algo. Yo nunca dije que me iban a contactar y que iba a juntarme con cada uno de los residentes otra vez, sino simplemente quiero decirles que si no recibieron el este, el papel, o quieren sumetir más documentación, pueden contactarme.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to jump in here real quick. Chris?
Yes.
If every resident requests another meeting, I really believe, I would feel better that you take every single request.
Yes, yes, they're, I'm available in person, Zoom, email, text, whatever convenient for them.
Okay, thank you. Could you please?
La mayor doma dice de que Chris, yo me sentiría mucho más mejor si cada residente quiere volver a hacer una junta contigo, de que tú hicieras una junta con los que los atendieras. Chris contestó que sí, estoy disponible en persona, en teléfono, en email, o en Zoom meeting, en una junta de Zoom.
And I, one more question. Do you speak Spanish, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just see if I have anything else. So you've probably had multiple relocation projects over the years, not just in San Marcos. I just want to confirm, have you ever had a situation where you have not relocated all of your tenants?
Okay. So quisiera hacer una pregunta. Yo pienso que te has tenido muchas situaciones donde tienes que reubicar a mucha gente. ¿Ha habido una situación donde no pudiste reubicar a todos tus este, renteros?
From my experience, no. And going back to the first phase of VSedena, there were residents that weren't able to relocate when we met, when it came to the deadline, and so we relocated those residents to nearby hotels until we were able to find someone within our property nearby, or until they were able to find a replacement home.
Okay. So, no. And si, en el caso del 340, cuando tuvimos que reubicar a todos, los que no tenían, los últimos renteros que teníamos y que no tenían dónde moverse, los quisimos, fue moverlos a los hoteles cercanos, y en cuanto hubo una oportunidad o una unidad vacante en una de nuestras propiedades, les llamamos para que se movieran para atrás.
And then I have one more question or comment for staff and a question. Sylvia, you said that you'll be reaching out with a phone call to all possible communities. So I appreciate that. If they, do they tell you at that time how many they have coming up, or how does that work?
So Sylvia, una pregunta. Tú dijiste que ibas a contactar a todas las comunidades para ver si tenían disponibles. Ellos te van a decir cuántas unidades van a estar disponibles, o cuántas se van a disculpar en un futuro?
We will ask each developer to notify us of any vacancies now through the end of the fiscal year.
And is that call made to a manager and somebody of authority?
Yes, I'll make sure that it's with a manager or a person of authority.
Okay, thank you.
Sí, vamos a llamarle a todos los, a todas las locaciones, y para darnos a saber si hay disponibles, o cuántas van a ser disponibles para terminar el año. Y esta llamada va a ser para, con una manager, o alguien de los de arriba.
Okay, council member Nunez.
Thank you, mayor. Primeramente, para los residentes que es su primera vez aquí en este Cabildo, bienvenidos, están en casa. Y para los que ya han estado con nosotros, qué bueno que nos acompañan otra vez. Así es de que buenas noches y muchas gracias por, por estar aquí, para hacer presencia y para abogar por sus derechos, verdad que todos tenemos. Así es de que están bienvenidos, están en casa, y muchas gracias. To start off, I want to thank the residents for being here. For those of you that it's the first time you're here tonight, welcome, you're home. And for those of you that have been with us before, welcome back and thank you for, for being here. And thank you for advocating for, for all of our rights. I have a number of questions, and I think it's a combination of questions for National Corps, for Chris, and for our staff. First, I do want to say that I wish this was under different circumstances. I wish we had a professional interpreter, so that we don't have misinterpretations, things that are not heard, things that are not interpreted correctly. And so I do wish that that was different, and it is something that as a city, we can do better. And I'll go into a few of my questions, and some of them I think we've touched on a little bit. But I am very concerned that we have some very serious allegations that have been raised today by our residents, and I do agree that there's inconsistencies in just what I've heard today that's been presented. So I'm just gonna go through a couple of things. For instance, so one of the questions that I do have is the meeting that happened with residents, I've been provided with, what I've been told is a copy of the presentation that was presented to, or shared with the residents. I only have an English copy, so I'm wondering, was a Spanish presentation done? And was the presentation done in language in Spanish? From what I see here today, a number of the residents are Spanish speakers, so I'm wondering if they didn't receive a Spanish presentation, why that's the case? So I'll start with that.
Council member, did you want to translate that, or should I just answer?
I'm not gonna be translating today, so we could, I'm gonna be asked for a continuance of, in a workshop, so we can have interpretation. And I am also gonna be asking for an in-language Spanish presentation, so that we're all clear on what, so we can properly address, I think, the concerns that have been raised by our residents.
Okay. To answer that, the presentation on December of 2023, before the New Year holiday, the presentation visually that you're seeing was presented in English, and it was translated in Spanish in that same community event. So I did the English, I presented in English, and then we have it translated vocally in Spanish.
So what I'm hearing, if I understand correctly, there is a Spanish version of the presentation that I didn't receive prior to today?
No, that's incorrect.
Okay, so is there a reason why there's no Spanish presentation that was presented? Because how many of your residents would you say are monolingual Spanish speakers?
Majority.
And so is there a reason why we would not present in language?
So the document wasn't translated in Spanish, you're correct. The presentation was done in English and Spanish.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So at a minimum, I would suggest that we have a Spanish presentation, and we do a Spanish presentation in language. The other inconsistency that I, that I see in the, in the presentation that I was provided is that I'm being told today that you're essentially available all the time when residents have questions, issues. And what I see in the document that I was presented, you're identified as relocation manager, Chris Baez, with a phone number and an email, and it says here, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. One of the things that I heard from many residents this evening is that these are working people. And so my question to you is, is there any availability after hours, weekends, where they might be able to have a conversation with you? So I, that's a very big issue for me, and so I want to hear about that. And if there are no accommodations for that, I want to hear what we can expect moving forward from today on.
So yes, those are our normal business hours, just like anybody would have during business hours, but we are available, and I am available early mornings, late nights, weekends, I've gotten calls on holidays, I've spoken to anybody, I never put my phone away or say, hey, I can't talk to you at this moment, and I have many logs and text messages and emails to verify that. Also, you know, we put ourselves in the shoes of, I'm a resident of National Corps and I have family as well, so I want to provide, that's my job is to provide to them service, and that's what they're entitled to. Also, going back to, can you repeat the other question that you had?
Yeah, so I don't, and I'm saying you, because obviously you're here in front of us, but when I say you, I'm talking about what accommodations in general are being made for this important process, for the specific needs of this community and these residents, right? Because we're not talking in the abstract. We know who the residents are, and we know what the needs are. And what I heard today is that you've had a number of meetings, one-on-one already, that had transpired, right? So I suspect that there's already a fairly, a fair assessment of what those specific needs are. And that's just one of the things. And I just share that as something, because it resonates with me when I hear from a number of residents that there's inconsistencies, and I do see them myself.
Correct. And back to your availability, you know, we do make ourselves available. The relocation interviews, they were done during hours, after hours. Our staff was staying there till 8:00, 8:30 in the night. I did relocation interviews via Zoom as well, for people to accommodate their work schedule. They were unable to put it, to be there in person. And, you know, for the inconsistencies, they were talking prior to even, you know, years ago, I could only speak of what's going on now, and I know my team and I are available 24/7 for these residents, and they have my contact. Every notice that's put out there has my email, my phone number. I even explain to them that if I am in a meeting for some reason, and it's text message, I could answer a lot quicker for them. But I do make sure personally that I get to everybody's call every single day, no matter what.
Thank you for that. My follow-up with respect to that ongoing communication is then, how would these residents then, that you met with on, at the end of December, how would they know then that there's extended availability or other ways to, to meet with you, other than the regular business hours?
Sorry. So we put communications out to their doors, and we hand-deliver them, to them, so we don't just send an email blast or a text message, we make sure they get the notices to their door. And as I said previously, this week we'll go out an additional packet of the one from County San Diego, that shows the affordable housing communities outside of San Marcos. And then we'll probably reiterate and go through with a communication notice, just going over today's meeting that we are available for, and reiterating the contacts of who to reach out to, and if they need one-on-one services, we're here for them.
Okay, thank you for that. I do have some follow-up questions. I think we've had questions about, I heard a number of residents talk about being referred to or receiving some sort of referral list, and I think if I understood, we're talking about our one-page affordable housing stock that we, that we have on our website, that we provide to residents, is that?
Correct. It's the one in the city in San Marcos website, so I believe it's, I believe it's four or five pages back and front that showed all the affordable housing communities in San Marcos, and it's available online for English and Spanish, as well as that packet that I was just explaining, that's available online as well, on the San Marcos website.
I'm very familiar with that list, and so the question for, for you is really, as I think about our housing crisis, as I think about our situation, when we're giving a resident these five pages, what, don't we already know what those units that are potentially available? So the question for me is, if we're trying to relocate 60-something families, and everybody's being provided this list, and there's three or four available units, what's the point of handing this list? What do we expect to happen?
No, you're right.
So can we have a conversation about that, what that looks like then for each resident?
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yes, and well, and for, I have more questions.
Yes, I realize that, council member. We have an agenda item that we have gone so far afield and strayed away from our agenda that we are. that we are getting precipitously close to violating the Brown Act. We're here to discuss an amendment developer loan, not to set up an ad hoc forum on the conditions for the development. And I think it's a great idea, and I think we probably should do that for a better understanding for the community. But as of yet, I have not heard one member of the council discuss a reason why we should not move forward on approving that loan, because that is the issue before the council. So.
Well, I brought up what we were actually voting on a couple of times.
Right, so I would make the motion that we approve item six. And then if we want to initiate a discussion on setting up a forum, then we can certainly do that.
Well, I will second that, but I would like to hear the rest of the discussion, and if there are any other questions here this evening, I, I would be open to that. But I, and, and councilmember Nunez still has some more questions, so I want to hear that.
Yes, we are, okay.
We, we what?
I'm sorry. With respect to the Brown Act, what, the majority of what has transpired this evening is public comment, and that's sacrosanct. So what the council members are doing now are asking questions. And yes, they may not directly pertain to the loan, but they are directly pertinent to the project, which is being loaned potentially by a significant amount of city funds. So I think that the council does have the ability to discuss the project to some degree. And I think we're still within the boundaries of the Brown Act. But I do agree that it is probably a good time to get this, this discussion underway and then, and then conclude it one way or the other. And I, you know, you, I believe there is a motion on the floor, so you're asking him to amend that motion?
And, and I, and I would like to continue the conversation. Councilmember Nunez still has more to, more questions. She said, we want to hear the answers, we want everyone to be able to be heard. And then, as I mentioned earlier in my comments, we will make sure that everyone in the, in the audience, we'll have them fill out another speaker slip if we have to, we'll stay here all night, I don't care. I, I want everyone to feel like their questions are answered. And if you don't mind, please, explaining what I just said. Sorry if you weren't listening, but that would be great, if you could.
Repeat that.
So what I said was, we have a motion on what our business is here this evening, but, but we still have a lot more discussion to happen up here with the council. And then also, we want to make sure that everyone has their questions lodged on the record so that we don't have any issues where someone feels that they haven't been heard. So which part? We want to make sure everyone has their voice heard and their comments on the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, councilmember Nunez, please continue.
Oh, thank you, mayor. I do have a lot of concerns about some of the issues that I heard this evening with respect to documents, or residents specifically having in their possession documents that have different signatures, different dates. That is really troubling to me. And one of the things that I'm thinking about is what legal services are available to these residents? In particular, I'm thinking about, as a city, we have contracts, we have arrangements with an organization like Legal Aid. Then we have a responsibility to protect our residents, especially in these low-income affordable housing. And so I'm thinking through, what is available for our residents? Has any of that, of those services made available? So as I sit here, I'm thinking through, what else can we offer so that we resolve these, these discrepancies? And also, I'm thinking about some of the other issues, some of the questions about whether or not residents were provided documents in Spanish, whether or not they signed particular documents. And I heard, what I heard over and over today is whether or not they had been explained, they were informed that they were signing these waivers. And so that, to me, seems that if we can try to reconcile what might be available through an organization like Legal Aid or some of the other organizations, because I'm thinking that some of our residents are not going to be able to afford to pay an attorney on an hourly rate to get opinions about some of these issues that we're hearing. So those are just some of the questions that I have.
I, I just want to say one thing. We haven't been pausing, I did, but we haven't been pausing to have a translation for, for time for a translation. And I know, I know you said you didn't want to translate, but I feel like that should be done so that folks in the audience know what's going on. I'm a little concerned that now we're talking and they don't understand what's happening. And, you know, we want to be transparent. So I'm thinking, can we dial that back and start a little bit slower? And I'm sorry to put this on, and I do have a little bit of candy for you. Just a little bit. But here, here, I'm so sorry. But you can't eat, you can't eat with your mouth, or with food in your mouth. Or you can't speak with food in your mouth, okay?
Not a problem.
Okay, so dice que quiere, la mera de me dice que quiere que yo ayude a traducir lo que está diciendo para que tan siquiera entiendan un poquito.
I know that there's two people that have said already that I'm not a professional translator.
Correct.
But I'm doing this for them.
Yes, yes, and we want that, yes.
Because I just want them to understand partially of it, rather than nothing of it.
That's right.
So disculpen, yo sé que ya me di dos personas me dijeron que yo no soy un traductor profesional, y yo lo entiendo. Yo lo estoy haciendo para que ustedes tan siquiera entiendan un poco de lo que está pasando, y se vayan como que entendieron un poco, a que se vayan que no entendieron nada. Entonces, por eso lo hago por ustedes, okay? So, disculpen si en eso les falló un poquito de que no traduzco todo completo, pero la idea mayor se las voy a dar.
Sí.
Entiendo.
Okay, so we're going to have, we're going to have time for questions at the end. And councilmember, sorry if you could, please continue. You heard the translations, so if it was, if you wanted to say more and it wasn't covered, please do.
Okay, thank you. And, and with respect to the interpretation, thank you very much for stepping up to do this. I know it's hard. My point is that, as a city, we have the resources to provide professional interpretation, and that's what should have happened this evening.
Understood.
So nothing against your, doing fine. I do have one other, one other question, or one of the items that I heard from a number of residents this evening is talking about being told that they can go rent a room somewhere. So with respect to those comments that I heard today, where are these rooms? And what, what, what is being offered, or what is being suggested or recommended? Why am I hearing that there are these rooms that families can rent?
So the clarification, and during these conversations, when we're doing the relocation interview, we do have the conversations that we're not, you know, we're not, we provide advisory services, but we're not the advisory service to tell them where they have to go. Depending on each circumstances, and even based off past, you know, projects, and even via Serena One, there were families who either rented in a market apartment, went to an affordable, some did go rent a room with family members, some, you know, had another house or maybe family in Mexico, and then they came back after 18 months. Those were just examples given. And I completely, I completely told my staff that they were not that kind of advisory service. We just gave examples of, you know, maybe possible options. I can't tell them, I don't know their finances well, I don't know their situations. And so those were just suggestions beyond the affordable housing communities.
And then I do have, I do have one other question about the, the timeline that has been set in motion, the 120-day notice that has been given to the residents. How did, how did that timeline come about? Why did we pick the end of December versus not waiting until January? Or if you could give some detail about that?
So, and John, you could chime in this as well. So by law, we're required to give a 90-day notice. We gave 120 notice just to give, you know, 30 extra days. Any day is, is better than nothing. But the deadline was for May 1st to start prepping for the actual construction date of June 1st. So that's why it was issued on, I believe, actually, January 2nd was the 120-day notice that was issued out to the residents, to their door, and via certified mail. And John just actually needed to clarify that the $5,000 that was given to the residents that was on that notice of eligibility is not something we're required to do. When they sign the waiver, they forfeit all relocation benefits. And that includes advisory services, and advisory service would include like even providing, like the list that you mentioned, any availability in the neighborhood, providing outside the city of San Marcos. So we are doing that as well. But that $5,000 is something that National Corps is giving, it is not a required amount.
I'd also like to say that when is the relocation rights waiver signed? It's when entering into the unit. So if there was no relocation rights waiver signed, and the unit was leased, that resident would become eligible for a rather large sum of funds, which are not part of the budget. So therefore, the law is that if you enter into this lease agreement to live here at a low-cost rent, you are giving that up. Otherwise, otherwise, National Corps would keep that unit vacant. Nobody moves in because it's infeasible to provide relocation for people that are not eligible to do so. There's no funding source for that.
Well, that was one of my questions that you didn't answer, and I have it circled here. I went back and found it. I asked, what were the waivers provided for, for what reason? And if you could just, maybe just.
Yeah, so if John Seymour wants to rent a, any unit at Villa Serena, okay? John Seymour is not entitled to federal and state relocation benefits, unless, unless I am entitled.
Right.
But if I'm going to rent a unit, and we know that we're going to be demolishing the unit, you are hereby giving up your rights of relocation benefit.
I think you should translate there because it's pretty, and then, yeah, because it's pretty complicated.
So you cannot, you don't get the funds to relocate people.
Right. So if we leased units without the relocation rights waiver, the project would become infeasible because of the cost of the relocation benefits. And it concerns me to say that, or concerns me to hear that people are giving up the relocation rights to move in. They're not, because they don't have relocation rights to move in.
Well, that goes to one of my questions, that was a follow-up, because I have them all together. And that is, when someone leaves that was, that was available or eligible for relocation benefits, and you have a vacant unit. Can you give me an example, and maybe Jenny can, of what that rent, the new renter is coming in, is it less, or is it the same?
It's less.
Okay, so maybe Jenny could give us an example? I don't know, like, one number, I don't know. Like, for, for someone that leaves, they're paying a certain amount, and then a new person comes in that is not eligible for benefits, what is that difference? I think that would be very helpful for people to understand.
When the new resident moves in and is not eligible for relocation.
Wait, I think he should translate what I said first.
So la mera de me preguntó de que, okay, si una persona que tenía los beneficios es relocalizada a otro lugar, okay, se va, y está pagando, digamos, cierta cantidad. Cuando una persona nueva llega y firma ese contrato, pero que no tiene los beneficios, y firma ese papel, ¿qué tan significante es la cantidad de que pagó el que se fue, comparada a la persona que viene, pero que no tiene beneficios?
So when a resident moves in and they sign the relocation waiver, they're hereby going to be paying a rent which is substantially lower, less, than the market rent. In this case, it would be 30, 40, or 50% of the area median income. So they're, they're getting, they're paying rents that are below market for this period of time that they're residing at the complex.
Okay, so translate that, and then I have a follow-up question on that. So why are they not eligible for benefits?
Because they, okay, Chris, you want to answer?
Yeah, so, so John, if you.
Wait, 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 I, I want him to translate, so we can.
So at the initial application for funding, that is the cutoff date. So anybody after that applica, oh, so, go ahead. Anybody moving forward and moves in after that date of the application funding would, would require to, to re-sign that waiver if they choose to move into via Serena. Now, John, just to, oh, go ahead, if you.
Yeah.
And so it's contingent on when they sign their lease?
And so it's contingent on when they sign their lease? At what particular point determines eligibility?
Correct, after they submit the application for funding, correct.
After the funding is, okay, so after the funding is applied for, you've got a number. So that's the number that you're working with. So you only have so much benefits that you can actually spend because you have a budget that you have to now follow, correct? Am I, am I getting that right?
Yes, and...
And?
And...
Maybe, maybe say that part, and then "and"...
Entonces dice, entonces lo que estás tratando de decir es de que después de que se rellenó esa aplicación para los fondos, para la remodelación de estas unidades, cualquier persona que vino entonces después de ya no tiene ningún beneficio. Y dijo que sí, yes, and...
And we've been making funding applications for Villa Serena 1 and 2 for years. To the county, to the state, to the city.
Y hemos estado rellenando la aplicación para la remodelación de Villa Serena por muchos años al condado, a la ciudad, al estado.
Do you know what year you started the actual waivers? Because I think that would be when you started original funding, right?
Correct, and I think that from what I recall, one of the first waivers was 2012. And so explaining that to the residents that sometimes it just takes that long.
I think you should...
Entonces tú empezaste a firmar, a dar los waivers después de que aplicaste la aplicación para los fondos. Chris contestó sí, y si no mal recuerdo fue como en el 2012 que fue la primera vez, dando entender que estos procesos toman mucho tiempo.
And Mayor, one important thing is a lot of the residents expressed that, you know, why all of a sudden we have a community meeting and then we get hit with 120-day notice and it's time to go? And so, John, if you could just briefly explain TCAT restrictions on that and why we have a deadline to follow.
Wait, he needs to translate that.
Okay, entonces muchos de los residentes ahora se preguntan que por qué fue que tuvimos una junta y luego de repente nos dan una nota de que tenemos 120 días para irnos.
So when the applications are funded or awarded, and we get to the point where we're ready to apply for the tax credits, which is twice per year...
Okay, so cuando los fondos ya están casi listos para ser aprobados, nosotros tenemos que prepararnos para los tax credits que se dice que se llaman, que pasan dos veces al año.
Yes, and in this case, the tax credits are $26 million. For the tax credits, which triggers the time to pull a building permit, pull a demolition permit, etc., to start the project. And so therefore, fund, fund, award, award, no award, reapply, get the funding. Oh, tax credits now, we can apply for, and that sets the time clock.
Okay, entonces dijo que porque, porque los fondos son de 20 millones.
Twenty million?
Twenty six million, you said? Entonces cuando tienen que hacer los tax breaks, entonces como dos veces al año, entonces eso fue lo que nos dio más o menos el tiempo de que teníamos que decir, okay, ahorita se tiene que hacer esto.
And if we don't comply with the timing, we lose, the city loses that $26 million in investment into the community.
Okay, y si no, y si no nos volvemos para adelante con esto, entonces la ciudad pierde esos 26 millones que se podían invertir en la comunidad.
Which is why there are deadlines, such tight deadlines.
Correct.
Y es por eso que hay límites de tiempo que se tienen que, desafortunadamente, a veces aplicar.
Okay, any, any other que, are you, are you more?
I have a council member... I have a comment and a request as we, as we move forward. First of all, I want to, I want to thank National Corps for not keeping units vacant. I know that's, that's somewhat of a concern, but I do want to express my gratitude for renting these units, especially with the housing crisis that we have. So thank you for continuing to do that.
Okay, so también dijo, quiero agradecer a National Corps porque no dejaron las unidades vacantes, tomando en cuenta que tan difícil es tener un hogar. National Corps siguió rentando estas unidades en vez de tenerlas vacantes, so gracias por eso.
And my request is, I think there's a lot of miscommunication, and there's a lot of information that I think needs to be shared with all of the residents. So my suggestion is that we schedule or we continue today's conversation, today's hearing. We schedule a workshop in language, in Spanish, for our residents and with city staff to make sure that individuals get their questions answered and the opportunity to look at documents and reconcile some of that. And also to do, I would personally want to see some sort of continuance so that we can make sure that at least some of the concerns that have been addressed today are addressed.
So, oh yeah, go ahead.
So, a mí me gustaría que siguiéramos esta conversación con, en otro tiempo, en español para que la mayoría de los que vinieron con sus preguntas y tengan respuestas porque siento que se perdió o no sé tú, no se interpretó todo como debería de. Y aparte de eso, le daría tiempo, si nos volvemos a reunir en un futuro, para casi también le dé tiempo a Corps y a los residentes de haber resolvido tal vez algunos de los problemas que se trajeron hoy en esta junta.
So this evening, the action is to adopt a resolution approving an amended developer loan agreement. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop and let you, yeah. So tonight's action is to adopt a resolution approving an amended developer loan agreement.
Okay, so la acción de esta noche es para adoptar este, el préstamo para renovar, digo, okay, I'm sorry. Para, 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 este, aprobar el préstamo para la renovación de las unidades. Esa es la acción de hoy.
Between, it's by and among, the successor housing agency of the city of San Marcos...
Okay, successor, right.
Yeah, that's, I don't know, I don't know how to translate it. I would just say it if I do. Between the city and also Villa Serena Apartment Limited Partnership.
So ese contrato es el que va a ser visto entre la ciudad y Villa Serena, so eso es lo que se está hablando.
And then authorizing the city manager to execute that agreement and associated actions. So the city manager to authorize the city manager to sign those agreements essentially.
Okay, y es para autorizar a la, a la manager de la ciudad para firmar estos agreements.
I believe that there is a confusion this evening of the relocation plan, which is very important and it affects everyone out in the, in the audience today. But that is not to be confused with what our action is this evening, which is to actually approve the loan. The loan has to happen in order for us to move forward to providing safe housing for our residents and, and to be able to rebuild this project. And we don't want to lose out on the, on the tax credits. And I feel there's actually a misrepresentation of what our actual action is this evening, and it's very important to, to note that.
Okay, so, este, yo sé que hay confusión en el plan de la relocalización, pero el punto de esta noche es para ver si se va a aprobar los fondos para la remodelación de las unidades. Y si es que no lo hacemos pronto, se pierden esos créditos, y así también perdemos la oportunidad de servirle a la comunidad.
And...
Y...
I'm going to put some, some pressure on you guys. I am, I'm going to put some pressure on you.
Y los voy a presionar a ustedes también, okay, so los voy a poner poco de presión.
Because, let me find my notes here.
Porque déjeme encontrar mis notas.
I feel like, and I'm gonna say it again, I said this earlier, I feel there needs to be more hand-holding going on here.
Porque siento que nos debemos de ayudar más aquí en esta situación.
You can feel the tension in this room of people that are scared. I don't, I don't like that. I don't want, I don't want our residents to feel this way. So I'm gonna put some pressure on you because I think there needs to be some true coordination. We're gonna do our part, we're going to call the affordable housing folks, the other developments, but we need you to step up and, and help people feel more comfortable. And I, and I'm gonna put that on you, and I want you to say yes.
Yes.
Okay, so could you explain what I just said?
Vamos a ponerle un poco de presión a ustedes también. Nosotros vamos a hacer nuestra parte, vamos a llamar a todas las localidades a ver qué se puede hacer, pero también necesito que hagas tú tu parte, y tú quiero, quiero que también hagas tu parte y digas que sí. Yo contestó sí, sí va a ser su parte para ayudar en este proceso.
Council member, does that, does, did he cover everything that I said? Not that I don't trust you, I just want to make sure that he, he captured what I was saying just now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, any other questions or discussion between council?
I think it's a fantastic idea to schedule another community forum...
Yes.
...to discuss all this and, not to get into personal issues, when I was a boy, we were given 30-days notice to get out, and they leveled where we were living. And we moved halfway across the county because we had to, so it's not unfamiliar to me. But I think what happens then is with this set of circumstances tonight, when people move into a community, you start meeting your neighbors and asking, you know, hey, tell me about when you came in. And so people come in at different points in time under different conditions, and so then there's a misunderstanding that, well, how come this and not me, and why this and why that? So we're talking about the incentives, the $5,000, and absent some clear understanding and maybe reinforcement, then it looks, and it gives the appearance that there's some inequities involved. And I think that is a major hurdle that we can overcome by sitting down and going over this, probably in painful detail at a forum, but I think that's what needs to happen, to make sure everybody understands this is how this particular type of business is, I don't want to say run, but it's how it maintains itself. So the issue tonight is to keep that moving forward because I don't think anybody here wants to see this project come to, or any of the projects that National Corps and other developers are working on to provide affordable housing. And it, and it could stall, and we don't need that to happen. If it loses the momentum, it could lose its energy completely and move on somewhere else, and we don't want that. So, and you mentioned earlier Lido Imperial.
Translate, you're going too far out of the weeds.
And I'm the bigger complainer about it.
Translate, come on.
I got most of it. So, él dice que, no es para ponerse personal, pero él también pasó sobre eso, que antes nomás te daban 30 días y tenías que irte, había veces que te movías hasta al otro lado del país. Dice que él entiende lo que está pasando porque él también pasó sobre eso. Dice, la cosa es de que cuando te mueves en una comunidad donde tienes vecinos, te empiezas a hablar de cuándo tú te moviste, qué te pasó a ti, y ahí es donde empiezan como, oh, pues porque a ti te dan esto, porque a mí no, y lo que sea. Entonces eso entiende, pero el problema dice que, él dice, no, no el problema, él dice que es una muy buena idea de que vuelvan a tener otra junta y hablar más en detalle todo lo que está pasando. Y el plan es, yo pienso que todos quieren el plan de moverse para adelante y reconstruir estas unidades que al último beneficiaría a muchos, a muchas personas de bajo recurso. Porque no nomás National Corps o otras compañías que también están construyendo apartamentos de bajo recurso, yo pienso que dice, no necesariamente estamos diciendo que sí se va a mover para adelante con los fondos, puede que se paren, pero no queremos perder esa oportunidad, dice.
And I worked in this city when the Villa Serena were the Lido Imperial, and that area was plagued with a lot of problems. Seeing it where it is today and where it's going tomorrow is fantastic, so thank you for that, thank you.
So dice que yo estaba cuando Villa Serena tenía otra fase, ahorita me da mucho gusto de cómo está ahorita, y me da mucho gusto saber en cómo va a estar para el día de mañana, so eso me da mucho gusto, gracias.
Council member Sanelle.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to...
Sure, make sure you provide time for translation, thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming out and being part of this important discussion. All of the questions that I had have already been raised by all my colleagues, so I'm not gonna repeat those. But I've certainly learned a lot tonight. I wasn't here during the phase one and wasn't part of that. But I do want to also give National Corps some kudos for standing up here and trying to be informative and also just kind of taking, taking the heat, if you will. So I really appreciate that and trying to be as transparent as you can be. Everything that I've ever heard about National Corps has been positive. I think there's been a really positive relationship in our, in our city with National Corps, and I appreciate that as well. It's certainly a very complex and complicated matter. Hold me, stop, sorry.
So me da mucho gusto de que todos vinieran aquí hoy. Este, todas las preguntas que yo tenía, la mayoría de mis colegas ya los contestaron, so no voy a repetirlas. Lo que sí quiero decirles es darle también como mis respetos a Corps de que vino aquí y tratar de ser informativos también de lo que está pasando y dejar pues que también nos quejáramos con ellos un poco. Pero yo no estuve con ustedes en la fase primera de Corps, pero estoy aprendiendo mucho de lo que está pasando ahorita con esto, de la fase 2 de...
Yeah, thank Corps.
Y todo lo que he escuchado, sorry, y todo lo que he escuchado de Corps ha sido muy, muy bien, positivo, so me da mucho gusto.
Thank, thank you. And while this is a complex and complicated matter, I think you can kind of simplify it to a certain extent. And that is, in about four and a half months, there's a large group of our residents that are gonna be facing potential homelessness. And I know, I feel a lot better after your comments, John, earlier. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so sí, sí sabemos de que esto es un poco complicado, sabemos que en unos cuatro meses muchos de nuestros residentes puede que sean, estén sin un hogar, pero me da mucho gusto al saber tus, haber sabido, haber escuchado tus palabras que habías dicho.
Okay, I feel much more comfortable after your comments, John, about nobody, you actually said nobody will go homeless, and that you'll explore every avenue from hotels to relocation assistance to the extent that you're able to. And that's important. I think the kind of the root of this whole issue is that you could have the best relocation plan in the world, but if there's nowhere to relocate people, then it doesn't matter what the plan is, right? And so I think that's really the, you know, the issue that's at hand right now is there's just not any local relocation even as a possibility.
Okay, so me da mucho gusto que hagas dicho que nadie se va a quedar sin un hogar. Me da gusto que dijiste que vas a extenderte hasta, contactar a hoteles, o lo que sea. Dice, el problema es de que puedes tener el mejor plan para reubicar a la gente, pero si no hay lugares de donde ponerles, ahí es donde se encuentra uno con un problema, que pues, desafortunadamente no es, está fuera de la casa de, de John.
So because of that, I'm gonna kind of piggyback on what the mayor had requested of you. And I think really elevating the lines of communication with the residents is gonna be absolutely critical as we go through this over the next four and a half months. And I think, and I would like to request National Corps to really shift that line of communication to more of a hands-on approach, a more of a human approach with the residents, and more of a focus on the solution to where they're gonna end up residing in four and a half months from now. Be it hotels, be it finding other housing somewhere within the community, or whatever the other options are, but I really think four and a half months is gonna fly by.
Okay, so también sí me gustaría de que trabajaran en la comunicación con los residentes y tratar de hablar de una manera más humana. Y también voy a, voy a estar de acuerdo con lo que dijo la mayor doma de que sí te voy a poner un poquito de presión, de que ayudes y...
Okay, so you said something about hotels, I'm sorry? Yeah, the conversations and the communication with the residents between National Corps and the residents really needs a shift now to the different options that are available for them to have a place to live at the end of the four and a half month period.
Okay, para tener una mejor conversación con los residentes, ya sea de que se muevan a un hotel o les busquen otras unidades que estén disponibles para venir adelante, y que esa comunicación sea más humana, como tratándose más mejor uno al otro.
Yeah, and, you know, that, like I said, that four and a half months is gonna fly by. We all, we all know how quickly time goes by. And, you know, that's gotta be daunting for the residents that are facing that in such a short period of time. I understand the need to redevelop the project. It sounds like it's gonna be a great benefit for our community and potentially some of these residents when it's all said and done. But that, that window, that transitionary period, that window of pain, if you will, is certainly, it's there, and it's never gonna be a good time to have to relocate temporarily.
Okay, so dice, yo sé que esos cuatro meses van a volar, sabemos como el tiempo... Okay, so, dice, yo sé que esos cuatro meses van a volar, sabemos como el tiempo se mueve muy rápido. Pero yo pienso que si nos movemos para adelante y el, el proyecto se mueve para adelante y se termina, va a beneficiar mucho a nuestra ciudad y también va a beneficiar a nuestra comunidad. También como estoy seguro que algunos de nuestros, de estos residentes que van a poder volver.
But, but really keeping, you know, top of mind that these are families, these are San Marcos residents. They have kids in school, they have kids who have neighborhood friends, they have kids that are playing sports. We really need to try to find temporary housing for them nearby, so they're disrupted as least as possible. And again, I think that, and I'll, in my comments with, just kinda reiterating that we really have to shift that, that conversation, that communication with the residents with a more of a human touch. And that might, might mean that instead of just giving them a phone number or an email address, perhaps, you know, position somebody there at, at the complex in person on various different, you know, hours and days, so they can actually have those face-to-face conversations and really get that comfort level that they need to know that they're gonna be okay come, you know, May thirty, thirty-first.
Handholding.
Councilmember, just to confirm, that was the notice that was gonna go out this week stating actual onsite help during evening hours so to accommodate the residents. And like I said earlier, relocation interviews just completed this past Friday. So then, you know, this was the next step to have this meeting.
Thank you for doing that. I don't know, did you get all that?
So dice, yo sé que tienes que entender que es muy preocupante para los residentes de aquí. Tienes que entender que muchos van a la escuela, juegan deportes, tienen amigos en la vecindad. So entonces, vamos a tratar de, si vamos a relocar a estos residentes, vamos a tratar de que sea un poco cerca del área aquí para que no sea tan, tan drástico el cambio. También me gustaría que tuvieras a alguien, como dijiste, que quieres ayudar más. Entonces, tener a una persona física ayudando a los residentes que te quieran hacer otras juntas, no nomás proveer un email o un número de teléfono. Chris contestó de que sí, ya están trabajando en eso, de que van a tener a una persona físicamente trabajando.
After I wish as well, or no? You have to accommodate the residents.
Ajá, sí, para, para trabajar con los residentes. Van a tener alguien que va a estar trabajando hasta después de las horas normales.
And again, thank you for being here.
Okay, I have one last comment, then we have two speakers that maybe had another question. So I, I promised to give that time. So, I just really want to make sure that you understand for, I think probably all of us, I probably can speak on behalf of all of us, that a priority really is to the families that have their kids in school. As a kid who went to three different high schools, it, it was really hard on me. And I, I don't want that to happen to anyone else. I wanna make sure that we really prioritize trying to get those families to be able to stay within our community and, and make that happen somehow. I, you know, I know we have challenges, but I also know that there are things that we could do by, like what I keep calling it, a little handholding, a little bit of, I like how Councilmember Sanelle put that, the, the face-to-face interaction. And you're taking that time with your hours, but if you could please just translate that.
La mayor doma dice que ella también pasó sobre esto, donde tuvo que ir a atender a tres diferentes high schools. Que tengan eso en mente cuando quieran relocal, reubicar a la gente. Dice, para que no tengan que tener ese cambio para, para los niños que están yendo a la escuela, que traten de moverlos cerca de aquí, si es posible. Sé que hay, este, obstáculos también, pero también como ella dijo, tenemos que trabajar más humanamente y atrás de tener juntas de persona con persona, pienso que va a ayudar eso también mucho más.
Three high schools, I understand, okay. And then, and, I'm not proud of it, I'm just saying. I, and then I really wanna challenge you to clear up some of the confusion. And that would be through a very clear outline of what the process looks like, who does what, and what to expect. Because I think that would really, and, and that would be, of course, in English and Spanish. But I really feel like that would go a long way with the community. And we wouldn't have to have all of these folks here. They've, there are kids still here, I mean, really struggling to be here tonight because they wanna have their voice heard. We want their voice to be heard, but we also want them to understand what that process looks like. So they, so they don't have to be, they could be home enjoying their lives, you know what I mean? So I really challenge you to do that.
We do, Mayor, and, you know, part of the challenge is that there's the big overlying issues, like you just mentioned, the big relocation issues, and then there's the individual privacy of every resident, every family, that we don't go there, you don't know what you don't know.
Yeah.
So, I also think it's extreme-
Wait, wait, can we, can we take just one moment to translate all that?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not even following my own advice, I'm getting tired.
La mayor doma dice de que, a, que, okay, ahí.
Clear up the confusion, clear up the confusion, have a very clear outline.
Limpiar la confusión, de, de tener en mente, en realidad, quién es responsable de qué y hablar con los residentes, para que los residentes entiendan en realidad qué es lo que está pasando, cuál es el proceso y cómo ellos van a, a ser afectados de esa manera. Porque tenemos familias aquí que tienen a sus niños, sorry, que tienen a sus niños cuando deberían estar en la casa, pero sin embargo están aquí porque sí están preocupados por, en la situación que están.
Mayor, I also need to ask your help from the city perspective. The city has more deed-restricted units here in San Marcos than most cities combined.
Seven percent of our total housing is deed-restricted, affordable.
So that's, that's our request to the city is that, as a developer, our powers are limited to connect with Deputy Mayor Sharon Jenkins' deed-restricted apartment complex to say, do you have units that are turning over that we can put our resident into? Extremely difficult. If the city said, "All hands on deck, we wanna know when your units are turning," affirmed housing, Chelsea. We're all working together on this, like we did, accepting unit, accepting tenants.
Well, guess what?
So, all hands on deck, when are the turns happening? One available, two-bedroom available, three-bedroom available, when and how? And that's gonna take handholding with our residents, but also handholding with other properties in the city.
Agreed, and can you translate that? And then I have, I have some, a response on that.
Okay, so you want the city to assist- Yeah, the city to assist the developer to find units in other deed-restricted apartments. Deed-restricted, affordable apartments.
Okay, so también, John dice que también él pide la ayuda de la ciudad para que ayude también a encontrar otros lugares que sean de bajo recursos también, para que pueda ayudar a los residentes a moverlos ahí también.
And I think that's an excellent path. Councilmember Nunez actually brought that up this evening. She, I, I agree with it. And we already have Sylvia that is going to be banking those calls. I would, I would say that would be probably a very easy thing for us to do, and we could do it on a regular basis. I actually think that would be a good policy. We may need to bring it back, I don't really know. But I, I, I agree with this, and I think it could be easily done in, in-house by our staff. And now we have, we have Sylvia, and she's wonderful. But anyway, and, and I know that Councilmember Nunez also, again, brought that up. So I think that would be an excellent way for us to figure out, to work together and collaborate better.
So, sí, se me hace una idea muy buena, en sí, la-
Councilmember Nunez.
Council, sí, la conse, conse, miembro de, Nunez, disculpe. Ella lo, lo mencionó y también Sylvia, Sylvia dijo que sí, eso es lo que iba, ella iba a hacer, este, contactar a otras unidades donde sean de bajo recurso también, para que puedan, a ver si hay unidades disponibles para que así puedan mover a algunos de ustedes, o hasta yo.
Okay, and then we have two more speakers, and then, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add to that, thank you, Mayor. Sylvia's gonna be reaching out to those partners, and we would like to offer staff's assistance to work with National Core with some office hours so that we can be part of your team to help with the relocation. Given the urgency, I don't want to delay putting on a workshop. If, we'll work on more with a workshop further down the line. But I think, given the urgency, we want to make staff available right away.
Thank you.
Okay, so dice que va a agarrar, este, gente que va a trabajar con la ciudad con National Core para ver si podemos, este, empezar a trabajar rápidamente mirando la urgencia de lo que está pasando ahorita, a ver si podemos relocalizar a gente lo más pronto posible.
Okay, so we have two more speakers, and then we will be going ahead and voting, and I'll go through what we're voting on again this evening. So we have Paola Conde, followed by Georgiana Nahera.
Que hay dos personas que van a hablar otra vez?
Oh.
What? Paula. Paola. Paula, I, I'm tired, I'm sorry. My apologies for, for pronouncing your name wrong.
Oh, that's okay. Bueno, nomás quería asegurarme de que el, National Core mencionó de que van a ayudar a todas las personas, este, para que no se queden homeless. Pero quería estar segura si eso incluye también a las personas que ya firmaron el, de que se van a salir para el día primero. Y que si no encuentro algo para el día primero, pues sí, que ese ya es mi último día, o si tengo más días, o, o-
So I wanna, so National Core mentioned that they were gonna help everybody, so nobody would be homeless. I wanted to ask, is that everybody, even including those who have already signed the waiver that we are supposed to leave the premises after May first, or do we also get that help?
Okay, I, I can't answer that, so I'll have to have them come back and, after, I, I don't know, should we wait until-
Este será mi, este será todavía.
That was my only question.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
It would be for any resident at Villa Serena.
Okay.
Sí, sería para todos los residentes de Villa Serena.
Okay, thank you. And then Georgiana? Georgina? Okay, maybe she left, okay, sorry. All right, okay, so the motion- Am I saying it wrong, Georgina? The where? No, then I just got two more after that, that was it. Oh, I'm sorry, Mariel. I'm, my apologies, it got in my wrong. In my defense, I do have a little bit up here, sorry.
Mayor Rebecca Jones and all the council members, learning a second language requires a lot of effort, tears and long nights. Alcaldesa Rebecca Jones y miembros del concilio, aprender un segundo idioma requiere mucho esfuerzo, lágrimas y noches muy largas o desvelos. If you had to learn a second language, you would have to pay a lot of money to learn, and it would take a long time to learn the language. Si tú tuvieras que aprender un, un segundo idioma, tendrías que pagar mucho dinero y esto te llevaría mucho tiempo a aprender un segundo idioma. An interpreter charges a lot of money. Un intérprete cobra mucho dinero. Your comments about paying fortino for the interpretation with candy is very offensive to my culture and to my community. Tus comentarios acerca de pagarle a fortino con los dulces por su interpretación, esto es algo muy ofensivo para mi comunidad y para mi cultura.
I'm not sure what I said that was offensive. I didn't say anything about anything costing too much money. I never said anything like that. So I'm, I'm, I, I give you my sincerest apologies if you misunderstood anything that I said, because I have never said that it's too expensive to have an interpreter. Never said those words. I did- I, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I really don't know what you're referring to. Could, I'm, I'm not sure what, I don't know what she's saying. My-
So she took offense when you said, "I'll pay you with candy." I took it as a joke, obviously.
Oh, my goodness, oh, no, I was, I was totally kidding with him. And my apologies if you took it in an offensive way. I was, I was thanking him because what he has done has been so kind, that, that he was here this evening and jumped and, and served. And, and let me tell you something, I, I, there was nothing ever meant, any malice in my heart, that I would ever want to offend anyone. I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying. I, I don't think it's a joke. It's ten o'clock at night, we've been here for five hours, or four hours, and I, I'm trying to keep an upbeat and keep us on task. And my apologies, my absolute apologies. And if you were offended, I actually was getting ready to give you kudos and thank you for all of your help this evening. And I, I, I apologize from the bottom of my heart, and I hope that you can forgive me.
Oh, absolutely, no offense taken. Like I said, I do it for them. I understand, I have my own values and self-respect. No offense taken.
I was actually thinking I could give you a little bit of chocolate and give you a little more energy.
Not a problem.
I wanted to eat it myself, but anyway.
If I do have to agree with Councilmember Nunez, and as well, this lady, Mariel Solache. So I agree with them that an interpreter should have been here. But given the circumstances, I'd rather put my grin and help out, rather than, you know. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be moving forward had I not, or somebody else would have stepped up anyway.
So this evening, yes, so this evening, our action was to approve a loan. I can certainly tell you, and maybe you might want to translate this if you don't mind. Our action here this evening is to approve a loan. It's not about a relocation plan. That relocation plan was submitted quite a while ago to the city, the county, and the state, and approved.
La acción de esta noche es para aprobar el préstamo para la remodelación. No era para hablar, o bueno, para resolver el plan de relo, relo, reubicación. Eso ya fue sumetido hace tiempo. So, la, la, la acción de hoy era para eso, para lo del préstamo.
And we also agreed to all of the different things that we're going to do to move this forward so that there is better understanding. And there's no, a, a lack of understanding or confusion as to what everything is going to happen moving forward.
Okay, remind, repeat the first part of my-
No, I said, and, and, we've all, we've all discussed how we are going to work better together and our different things that we're going to be doing. They're going to have different office hours. We're going to be assisting in that. We are going to figure out how to, to, to work better moving forward.
Pero también fue, estas, esta junta fue para mirar cómo vamos a trabajar juntos y trabajar mejor. Ellos van a trabajar con, a los de la ciudad, y la ciudad va a trabajar con ellos para que así podamos resolver este, a, a, esta situación más fácil y mover, movernos para adelante.
Fortina? Thank you for all of your help this evening.
Not a problem.
Really, and, and truly, if I, if I offended you by bribing you with candy, it was literally nothing. No offense taken, I was trying to keep the meeting light, because it is, it is a very emotional thing, and I understand that. I, like I mentioned earlier, I, we all, I know I can speak for all of us up here. We, we do, we heard, we've heard your voices, it's important for us, and I'm sorry that anything was misconstrued or confused. And with that, I will go back to what we are voting on this evening.
Call for the question then, Mayor?
I, I'm, I'm actually restating it, so I'm getting to that. To adopt the resolution approving an amended developer loan agreement and by and among the successor housing agency of the city of San Marcos, the city of San Marcos and Villas Arena Apartment Limited Partnership, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same and to take associated actions. And we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Was there a second? I didn't, I didn't-
Oh, I did, I, I seconded, yes. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any knows? Okay.
And I, I just wanna make one quick comment.
Yes.
So, for the eleven years I've been up here, and you longer, I think National Core has always delivered on what they say they're going to do. And so I have, he spoke on the public record, and I have all faith that you're going to do what you said you're going to do. So thank you for, for stepping up and I believe you will do it, so thank you.
I do, Mayor, Mayor, I do have a clarifying question. Is-
I do, Mayor, Mayor, I do have a clarifying question. Is, at a certain point, can we schedule some sort of combined workshop? At what point so it doesn't interfere with the, with the funding?
If that, if that's council direction that you would like us to schedule a workshop specifically with Villa Serena, we can certainly go ahead and, and do that as, as quickly as we can put one together, which I probably need to confer with staff to, to get a timeline. If you would like a more comprehensive workshop for more of a community engagement activity, perhaps we can discuss that at the, the council goal setting. But whatever the council's direction is, we'll certainly move forward.
So, so Councilmember, I, I do have a quick question on that. Councilmember, what, what, what exactly do you want the workshop to cover? I guess that would be to get that figured out. I, I think timing would then be determined by that.
So what I'm thinking about is that we have a generally scheduled council meeting in two weeks. And so, what, what I would want to try to avoid is having these residents back in two weeks. And what I'm thinking of is, are we gonna be back here in two weeks? Or are we gonna make sure that their concerns, their questions are being addressed? That's, that's what my concern is.
So, my understanding was they're going to do the workshop with their residents. They've committed that they're going to do that. I, I didn't have the impression that we're going to be having a workshop. We've approved the loan and so they're gonna deliver on what they said.
Yes, I, I believe that National Corps is going to be hosting, having representatives from their relocation group available to residents at more convenient hours and some in-person assistance. And our staff, Sylvia's team, will be coordinating with National Corps to try to have some office hours on site at Villa Serena too to assist in, in that process as the immediate assistance to help with the, the urgency of the matter.
Which seems to me would probably be more convenient for more people to actually attend because it's not on one day. It's more on, and so maybe, I guess, you know, probably be helpful because we actually, Sylvia is going, for a second Sylvia, I just couldn't think of your name. Just a second. You're going to reach out to the, or to the other affordable housing development partners. You're going to find out where, where they're at, what they've got available moving forward. I think that information is probably very important to that conversation. So, I think just the coordination of saying, and, and they can let us know in a, in a, Michelle can send an email to all of us letting us know what, you know, when her hours are going to be coordinating with them and when you're going to be, and what your new hours are going to be. I, I guess, if we really need to know that part of it, I, I actually have every confidence, as Deputy Mayor Jenkins had, had mentioned. I have every confidence that now we all know that there is a communication issue. Now we know how to come together and actually help clear that up. So that no one feels like they don't know what's going on. I mean, that really is, and, and you actually said it on the record. You're going to work on that clarity. I, I think, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I think a workshop is probably not the best thing for most people to actually show up to. I think as long as we know and we'll get a, we just get a report back from staff saying, "Yes, this has happened and here are the steps that are being taken." Would that satisfy you, Councilmember?
I think we'll know in two weeks.
Well, can I, can I offer one?
Yeah, sure, yes, yes, Councilmember.
I agree with you, Mayor, that a workshop's probably not the best.
I just don't feel enough people will be able to...
But, but I have a, maybe a, maybe a compromise or a middle ground. I do, and I want to reiterate what I said earlier, I have full trust and confidence in, in National Corps. Everything I've heard from the day that I got involved in the city has been nothing but positive. And I know that they do a great job and they really care about our community and I, I fully trust that they're gonna deliver. But perhaps we can schedule at a future council meeting, maybe it's 30 days, 45 days from now. And we will agendize this again and then have staff give us an update, have National Corps give us an update. But that will also give the residents an opportunity, because it'll be agendized, to also share their feedback, should they have any feedback at that time.
Okay, so not agendize it again because it actually would be agendizing...
Well, not, not agendized alone, I agree with you, but agendize just, you know, the project.
So just an update as to where we are at in the relocation process, which we haven't done before and I'm not saying no, I'm saying it probably, well...
Could be an opportunity for everybody to...
I just want to make sure we're not gonna get into, I see Helen down there wanting to give us some feedback. So, no, yes, three weeks?
Your council agendas are your business, so...
Okay, well, so, I would...
It could just be a project update.
I, I would be, I would be happy to, I guess, actually, I guess I could actually put it on the agenda by myself. I would happy, I'd be happy to get an update on where we at, where we are at in the collaboration and make sure that everyone in, in our public that is here this evening or not here this evening or had to leave early because of their children, that they would be able to hear what our efforts are. And let us know and have, I guess, some feedback as to whether they think there's anything else that we could do better. We always like to give feedback, so...
It's not even, it's not, it's not, I mean, we're always focused on continuous improvement, but I would like to hear, you know, some, some data, some hard data. Like of 65 families, you relocated 30 at that point, whatever, whatever the number is, numbers are, right?
Well, they're not gonna be relocated yet because they're probably, yeah.
Well, no, but maybe you have like, you've, you've, you have a plan for 35, you have a commitment for them to go somewhere or they've, they were able to find their, you know, their own solution. But get the hard data because we're talking about four and a half months and we're talking about 65 families. And so, you know, there should be some sort of movement on that over the next 45 days. If there's not, then that's another concern.
Well, and I guess, just not pushing back or anything, I guess, I don't actually have to have a solid plan but that they're working together and they're, they're working for a plan, okay.
I'm with you.
All right, just making sure. And, you know, yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. So are we clear?
Do you have an idea of where that would be on the agenda?
I would say it's probably, on an informational item, we could still have public speakers, couldn't we?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, then I think it's an informational item with public speakers. Because we're not really taking a vote, we're, there's nothing to vote on, we're just making sure that everything that we've heard tonight actually does follow through and happen. Yeah, okay, yes.
Can I, can I get a point of clarification, Helen? My concern is to make sure that the residents have the opportunity, that they receive notice, that it's, there's an item on our agenda and they have that notice and they are able to speak if there are any concerns.
Yeah, that's what the feedback is, that would be, yeah.
Complies with the Brown Act? Anything beyond that, you're going to have to explicate and get the council to agree on or the city manager to agree that that's feasible. So, you know, that, those, those are the boundaries. We do meet the Brown Act requirement, so.
Maybe John or Jennifer could post something on site for the residents to see.
Yep, they're, they're giving us a nod, so the answer's yes. Okay. All right, I don't think we should be probably having much further discussion because, yeah, I could, I could tell. Okay, all right, we do have one oral communication. Rachel, I'm sorry, Rahul Patel, sorry. I gotta get my glasses on, I can't read. Welcome. Thank you for being so patient.
No worries, thank you. Sorry, this is first time I am attending this meeting, so I wasn't sure how, how it goes. And, sorry, I'm not feeling well either.
You're fine.
But I came here to express the interest of our community. There are a lot of people who would like to play cricket. And I know most of the people in America, they don't know what cricket is, but it's the second most popular game in the world. And we try to find, we play recreationally over the weekend. We try to find the playground. Sometimes we get lucky and we find playground in Hall India or some other baseball field. But other times, you know, sometimes we found it and it's booked and we get kicked out. So, we end up eventually playing right behind the Ranch of Tesoro. There is some like open field where there are like gray walls and all those things. But we still have to just play there, you know. So, I would like to propose to have at least, if, if city can build up, dedicate a cricket ground for us. If not possible, maybe have a way for us to just book one of the baseball fields that we have it available all the time, you know, over the weekend. So, we all play and enjoy, you know.
I think we do have our park reservations online, don't we? I haven't done it myself. I thought that we were doing it, but I haven't done it myself.
But I think, few of the guys I play with, they told me that like, you know, if you want to book the Hall India for like two, three hours, it's, it costs a lot of money. So I'm not sure if we get it, get it booked for free or how, how does it work?
Probably the best thing is for us to make sure we get your contact information and so we'll have Parks and Recreation get in, get in touch with you.
Okay.
I love cricket. I, I've got a beach cricket set, so I, I hear you.
Thank you.
Do we have to learn about tests and ashes and all those?
I don't know. Thank you, thank you for your comments. We appreciate you. Okay, yeah, so make sure you, there you go. Okay, Sandeg. Oh, man, it's been such a long time since we had our last meeting. Probably the biggest, most notable thing on the agenda was when we were voting on whether an interim plan on the 125, whether we switch companies and spend a significant amount of money, I actually, or if we don't move forward. Obviously, we needed to move forward, so we did, but we had already spent with some of the subcontractors right around, I think it was $10 million, a little shy of $10 million. And then the interim or the continuation of those in-between contractors before we switched to the new contractors was going to cost us another $5 million. And so what we are going to be doing this Friday, because I brought that back, I, I said I'd like to discuss that further if we're going to stay with these contractors that honestly haven't done their job since 2018. Quite a long time to fail at your job and then keep you on as an interim solution. And so, this Friday, we are going to be voting on whether we keep those folks in place or if we can come up with another plan. So, that will be an interesting conversation. We did move forward on the 125 and our auditor was there as well, our independent auditor. And she is planning on going on the 125 to see if we've been efficient and whether we've lost money on that. And then also, that will go next to the, I think, the 15. Those are on her audit plans. So, whether that same, those same companies, which is ETAN and HNTB, have failed us also on the, on the 15. So anyway, that, those are the most notable things. Can you think of anything else? Because I know you were there too.
I think you summed it up, Mayor.
It feels like a lifetime ago, but...
It was, yes.
Anyway, moving on to League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet again, I think it's next week, but we did have our first committee Zoom meetings and I sent all the council members and the city manager my summer report for the revenue and taxation Zoom. We would be here past midnight if I read it to you directly, but ultimately what it addresses are the...
Thanks for no.
Yeah, no.
Sorry, thanks for no.
Sure. It, it summarizes the, the League's position on, on their advocacy and part of what the governor wants to do to help balance the budget. And it's going to require some significant cuts and expenditures, moving the pea underneath a different shell and then spinning it around. One of those is at the end of the June, when the, end of the fiscal year, when employees would normally be paid, they're gonna be paid on July 1st. So then it shifts that debt over to the next fiscal year, which is not a bad idea, it's pretty creative unless you are depending on that money. But they're still looking at a $38 billion deficit and in your, the, what I sent to you, ACA 1, ACA 13, and the Taxpayer Protection Act, the information that I put in there is directly from the legislative website of how these amendments and proposals are described. So, what you have is what is officially on the state's site and including the action, current vote requirements, proposed vote requirements, and how they're impacted on the TPPA, because that is probably gonna have the greatest impact. So it's there for your reading and if you want any further information, happy to help.
Okay, thank you. North County Transit District.
I'll make it short. We reviewed our annual audit as of June 30th, 19, no, 20, what decade am I in?
Hey, we're getting a little punchy up here.
2023. And it was a clean audit. There's no material weaknesses or non-compliance. I think I spoke about the five-year capital improvement plan last time, so I'm gonna skip that. It went to the board though and was approved. And we also approved our board elections, committee assignments. Because of the change in our CEO coming up, we're gonna keep things kind of status quo. Jewel Letson from Solana Beach will be our chair again. Priya Bhat Patel from Carlsbad will be our vice chair. We have the committee assignments for the board and I will continue to be on the Performance Administration and Finance Committee. And that's it.
Okay, North County Dispatch.
No report at this time, Mayor. We'll meet again in February, next month.
Okay, okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet this Thursday.
Okay, OM Fitness, business visit. I went to that. I went to the ribbon cutting last week, that was. And there it is. It's a very interesting new fitness craze and it's the first one, I believe, in the state of California. Let's see, there will be, they're, they're planning on opening 16 locations throughout the region, believe it or not. Anyway, she's going to open the locations herself and award the other licenses to qualified multi-unit franchisees. And so here's what it is. There is this screen, as you can see, it looks like a television, and it literally has a workout going on there. So you see the guy that's up there, I don't know if it's sometimes a girl, but it was a guy when I was there. And you wear this, this outfit and it goes to about your knees and to about right here. And then it has these electrodes that stimulate your muscles, like, and I'm trying to see what it is. So 25 minutes, you get a two-hour workout. It's crazy. Anyway, this EMS technology produces and the high-energy and inclusive community at HOH, what's actually pronounced OM. OM Fitness was built, is a far cry from what is currently available at other group fitness concepts. So you put on this, this outfit, you do the workout and then it makes your muscles stimulated like if you worked out, you know, like I said, for two hours versus 25 minutes. And it's not like super high impact and you can't really see, but the, their little logo, it's like, it starts down here and it goes up. It kind of takes you where the workout is and how your body is reacting. It was really interesting. I've never seen anything like it. But the owner is Danielle Conklin. Anyway, again, she's gonna open 16 and this is the first one here in, yeah, in California. So anyway, very exciting, very interesting. We love having new businesses come. It's in Grand Plaza upstairs. I think there used to be karate there or something like that. Anyway, they're upstairs. A really nice location, very clean, and it does have red light therapy as well. And then it has this machine, I'm not quite sure how it works, I didn't try that out, where you like stand there and then it does a full body scan and it tells you exactly where, when you achieve your results, kind of how your body changes. So, anyway, it's pretty interesting. So, I don't know how much it is. They have a free week for everyone that wants to try it out, so you can go check it out and get in your little suit. So you just use the suit that they have, they have different sizes and they clean and sanitize them every day. So, anyway, that's it. Interesting. Oh, and they have, oh, they also have like little hand weights and that sort of thing. So anyway, that's OM Fitness. Let's see, San Marcos Creek Project.
With the rain this week, there's not much to report other than the creek is flowing and not flooding, so Isaac, good job, you did your job.
Not Mission Valley.
Not Mission Valley. And before we wrap up, I want to introduce, he can just stand and wave given how long the meeting's been, but Mark Olson began yesterday...
stand and wave, given how long the meeting's been, but Mark Olson began yesterday, this was a great first council meeting for him. Um, he's actually banned, moving forward from coming to other council meetings.
I saw him walk, when I was walking in from the parking garage this eve, or, well, whatever time it was, it was before 5 o'clock, it was like 4:30, I actually saw him and I waved, and he's probably looking at me going, "Well, she looks like a different person after all this time, from 4:30 to 10:30 or something," anyway. Yeah, so welcome, welcome, and we're really excited to have you here. And you do have a reputation to live up to, because parks is our fun people, so you got to have a little bit of fun, um, otherwise, sorry, we're not going to like you, no, I'm just kidding, we're gonna, we're gonna love you, and we really do love our parks in San Marcos, we call ourselves Sam Parkos, uh, just as a reminder, and we really, um, enjoy our parks, and so does our community. So anyway, welcome, and, uh, we look forward to seeing what you're going to do, to step us up to the next level. All right, with that, this, anything else? No one else? No one else we want to? Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Tired. Oh my God, no, I can't, I can't talk anymore. What, why do you really need something for me?